I'm on.
This, you can.
The mics are live. Good evening. We're going to call the April 3, 2018, regular Assembly meeting to order. I think it's not a regular Assembly meeting. It's a special session. A special meeting to order. It's about 5:30 on April 3. Clerk, would you please call the roll? We're going to call a roll of the Assembly initially, since this is a special work session of the Assembly, and then we'll ask everyone to just kind of go down the row and introduce themselves, and then we will start our meeting. Clerk, please call the roll. Mr. Lawrence?
Here.
Mr. Tackey?
Here.
Mr. Gray?
Here.
Ms. Major?
Here.
Mr. Cooper?
Here.
Mr. Quist?
Here.
Mr. Lojeski?
Here.
Mr. Roberts?
Here.
Ms. Dodge?
Here.
You have a form. Thank you. Before we go on, let me just give us a brief Safety Minute. We have three exits out of here in case we have an emergency. We have the doors that we came in through. Just go straight out the doors. We have a little single door over here behind this post. If you go out it and turn to the left, you'll find your way out. Then we have another door here behind this post. If you go out and then turn right, you'll find your way out. We don't expect that, of course, but it's always good to be prepared. Thank you. Now, I think we'll start. We're just going to briefly go around the dais, since many of us haven't necessarily worked together before, and we're pretty tightly packed here. We'll start with Mr. Miller.
Glenn Miller, Borough Transportation Director.
Please just.
Jim Williams, Borough Chief of Staff.
Jill Dolan, Borough Attorney.
Carl Castle, Borough Mayor.
Colonel Chad Bondurant, Allison Air Force Base.
Carl Shawn Fisher, Garrison Alaska Installation Commander for Wayne Ray.
Avery Thompson, City of North Pole City Council.
Doug Isaacson, City of North Pole City Council.
Bryce Ward, City of North Pole Mayor.
Sean Tackey, Borough Assembly Member.
Aaron Lojeski, Borough Assembly Member.
Andrew Gray, Borough Assembly Member.
Matt Cooper, Borough Assembly.
Anthony Dodge, Borough Assembly.
Van Lawrence, Borough Assembly.
Mr. Quist, Borough Assembly.
Matt Roberts, Borough Assembly.
Angela Major, Borough Assembly.
Kathleen Huck, Air Pollution Control Commission.
I'm Dr. Air Pollution Control Commission.
Mike Pollan, Air Pollution Control Commission.
Megan Waltzine, Air Pollution Control Commission.
Kent Severance, Air Pollution Control Commission.
And joining us also is Valerie Ferrian with the Fairbanks City Council. Thank you very much, everybody. With that, we're going to move straight into what brought us all here. It's a presentation by the Alaska Department of Environmental Conservation representatives on the preliminary draft release for serious state implementation plan, the SIP, Development Regarding Air Quality in the Fairbanks North Tower Borough Non-Atainment Area. Question and answer period is allowed for DEC and the Fairbanks North Tower Borough Area Air Quality staff with Assembly and invited officials. And I'm going to ask you first, do you prefer that we hold our questions until you complete your presentation?
Yes, I think that would be helpful.
Super. And are we going to lower the screen, or are we just going to go with our presentations? Thank you. And for our esteemed audience, we have copies of the presentation out there for you. If we run out, we're happy to make some more. Sometimes it's hard to see the screen. And if you can't hear, let us know. Okay? All good? Looks like we'll do a little turning on of technology. And the floor is yours. Right. I'm just waiting for the slides to... We may have to turn the projector on, I think. Mr. Williams is going to come help you. Do I have the lights dim? I can get them like that. Does that, I think, does it work for everybody if we dim the lights? We still see enough? Okey-dokey. Thank you. All right. Hello, everybody. My name is Denise Koch. I am the Director of the Division of Air Quality for the Alaska Department of Environmental Conservation. And I also wanted to introduce our other DEC presenters today. Cindy Heil is our Program Manager for the Air Nonpoint and Mobile Source Program. And much of the work for putting together the plans around, related to the PM 2.5 non-attainment area winds up in Cindy's shop. And then we also, of course, have Mr. Bob Della, one of our consultants, who will be also providing some of our presentation today. Thank you very much for all gathering here. We're always happy to come and talk to the Assembly and any community organizations or members about the work that we're doing on, related to the PM 2.5 non-attainment area, and the partnership that the state has with the Borough Air Quality Program. So, if you could, next slide, please. This is the quick overview of what DEC will be presenting, an hour presentation before we hand the mic over to Nick Sarnicki to give his presentation. And I will be covering, you know, how did we get here, and talking about the magnitude of the problem, and then I'll be handing the presentation over to Cindy Heil to talk about the preliminary draft documents. And then we'll be closing out with Bob Della talking about control measures, and then we'll end with Cindy talking about the timeline. So, if we could, we're going to switch to the DEC webpage. I wanted to mention where all the documents that we're going to be talking about today can be found. So, this is the main DEC webpage. So, if you just Googled "Alaska DEC," that very top, that very top item is the link for the preliminary drafts. And this is where you can find all of the documents, including the draft concepts and approaches document. That is part of your package. But, thank you, Nick. We're going to open up specifically the "How Did We Get Here?" PDF. I don't want to spend too much time on the big overview, but I think it does, I wanted to provide some overview to give a sense of where we are in a much longer, larger process. So, in 2006, EPA, EPA is mandated, made mandated by the Clean Air Act to evaluate science periodically and to set standards for certain pollutants, including fine particulate matter, which is, and the smallest of that is the PM 2.5, so the very small molecules. So, that's, this, what I'm going to go through here is very, very high level. Lots and lots has happened at the federal, the state, and the local level over the last 12 years, but these are just some of the big seminal milestones. So, starting with EPA, changing their standard, they lowered their standard from the 60s down to 35 micrograms per cubic meter. And that prompted EPA to do what they call, they call for designations. And essentially what they're doing is, they have access already to all of the air monitoring information from all of the regulatory monitors, and they're really, it's a fancy way of saying, you know, is your air quality complying with the national standards? Yes or no? So, the answer for the Fairbanks area was no. And a subset of the Borough got designated as being in non-attainment. And the first step on this larger path is it was designated as a moderate non-attainment area. Then, in the 2009 to 2015 timeframe, DEC did a bunch of, a bunch of work in terms of looking at studies, trying to characterize the problem. Their, DEC also had to work on what's called a State Implementation Plan, or SIP is sometimes the acronym that you'll see. But essentially, EPA saying that you're not in attainment requires, triggers this process of saying, well, we need to have a plan to come into attainment. That's what was happening from the 2009 to 2015 timeframe. DEC submitted this plan to get the area into attainment back in early January 2015. And then, in the interim, and also another significant milestone in 2015, is EPA decided that the monitor in North Pole, by the North Pole Fire Station, would be a regulatory monitor. And that was a really important step. It was a bit of a game changer. The initial designation to say that that area was in non-attainment, it wasn't in compliance with the standards, was based on the monitors in Fairbanks. So, the Encore site, close by here, and on top of the State Office Building. When EPA said the regulator, the monitor in the North Pole also was a regulatory monitor, that was important because that monitor reads much higher levels of PM 2.5 than the downtown monitors. Then, another item that happened is that in 2000, so we're skipping forward to 2017, now that the North Pole Monitor was a regulatory monitor, and EPA continued to look at the regulatory data from the Fairbanks and from the North Pole Monitor. They made a decision, and they said, well, we can see from the monitoring data that your plan, your plan to get into attainment hasn't worked. So, in 2015, the monitoring data was still showing that you had values above 35. And they then reclassified the area as a serious non-attainment area. That's another really major, important step. And I wanted to mention that we've heard, and I understand it's frustrating that, that people feel like rules have changed, things sort of change. So, I wanted to pause and mention that the architecture of the Clean Air Act and this whole non-attainment process is, has changed built into it. So, the first step, when you say, oh, the area is not in compliance, or it's not in attainment with a standard, and you have to put together a plan, like the moderate plan, you don't have to go right to the strictest controls for controlling the air pollution, because they don't want you to necessarily have to over-regulate. It's a stepwise process, and they allow you to put in, place some controls, and see if it works. If it doesn't work, then they'll come back and they, they say, well, your plan didn't work, you didn't get into attainment. So, now you're a serious non-attainment area. And that triggers a new set, a new round of planning, which is what we're doing right now. We're working towards a serious, serious implementation plan, so it's that plan to characterize the issue and to move the area into, into compliance. In the 2017 timeframe, actually after EPA designated the area as serious non-attainment, that was effective in June of 2017, in October of 2017, they actually approved the moderate plan. That was really helpful, because we knew, you know, the area was already, had been reclassified as serious, and we didn't want to have to work on two plans, which is just, I think, sort of a resource drain without really accomplishing much. But I did want to note that, I think, a lot of the reason that EPA approved the moderate plan was based on all the work that you've done locally, and all the ordinances that you have passed in setting up stages, for example, and including calling curtailments. Those were important factors for EPA in approving the moderate SIP. So, now we're in the serious, we're in our process of, our serious SIP process. And you can see there's the point in the middle which says, we're currently here in the process. So, at the end of March, DEC released on this website, a lot of the elements or the building blocks of the SIP. These are very, very early versions. There, there are portions of the documents that aren't even complete. So, in some ways, it's a bit of an unusual step. Usually, I think, when you hear from us, people expect that we have a really formal process, where we have a public notice and a hearing, and we have documents that are totally, totally buttoned up. This is an instance where this is a preliminary draft. We are showing you documents, because we want you to see our early thinking. We need your input, and, and that's, that's what we're doing right now. We will later on, after, hopefully, we receive some of this, this feedback and this input, there will be a formal process later on where we have, that you may recall with the moderate step. So, we will have another process, the formal process with a public notice and a public hearing, and all of that formality. This is just an additional process, and we thought it was important to come to you as soon as possible, because some of the controls, the control measures that we'll talk about tonight, some of this process, I mean, this is, it's, unfortunately, to some extent, we're not here as the bearer of good news tonight. I mean, some of the measures, they're going to take a lot, they're going to be a bit to think about, and we're going to need your feedback. And the Borough is the, is the lead on looking at the controls for sources other than what we call the stationary sources, which are essentially the utilities. And DEC is the lead on doing the best available control technology, or backed analysis, because we're the delegated authority, permitting authority under the Clean Air Act. So, that's a bit of the broad overview, and I'll pass it to Cindy Heil to talk about the preliminary drafts. Oh, forgot that. Forgot one more slide. So, just really quickly, this is the same slide that was presented at the second Town Hall meeting. I just wanted to show the magnitude of the problem. The bottom red line is the, is the National Health-Based Standard. The acronym there is NAC, but it's the National Standard. The bottom line is the line from the Fairbanks Monitor. The top line in green is the North Pole Monitor. There's not as many years of data for that monitor, because remember, I mentioned it was 2015 when EPA made that a regulatory monitor. The takeaways from this slide are, of course, there's a big difference between the North Pole Monitor and what you see at the Fairbanks Monitor. But I think what's also important to see is that, in some ways, maybe it's a, is the glass half-empty, or is the glass half-full? But you could see that even over just a short period of time in North Pole, based upon the work that you've done locally, you've really come down in that design value. You need to come down a lot more, but you've made a lot of progress. And at the second Town Hall meeting, I mentioned that we would, DEC would, would talk about our sort of, our fuller plan, to talk about controls, and that we'd be releasing it soon, and that's what we've released, and Cindy will talk about those documents.
All right. Thank you. So, this is going to be a very high-level overview of the preliminary documents. You have the possible concepts and approaches, possible approaches document. It's 15 pages. I highly recommend if you read anything, that's the one you read. It kind of summarizes items, it kind of shows a big picture of how things fit together. The couple of these documents are over 100 pages. They're very technical, they're very dry, they're hard to read. These are the documents that are normally in our appendix to our State Implementation Plan. We had very similar documents in the appendix of the moderate SIP, but when we brought the moderate SIP out, that got lost, because everybody was focused on the SIP chapters themselves and all the new stuff that was coming out. And so, this time, we're wanting to show you the foundation, the building blocks, so to speak, so we can get the input, and hopefully get more information to make sure people understand where we're coming from, and the whole big picture. All right? So, as...
Do you want us to hold questions again?
Yes, please. So, we released this, Denise, on March 22. You can use this at the current events. This is where you can, you can find it. This is the list of the preliminary draft documents. So, the first one, the possibility, the possible concepts and potential approaches is in your hands. Then we have the Technical Analysis Protocol. This is about modeling. So, this helps identify how the models work, how we calibrated, how it, how it's set up. It's, it's really dry. A lot of this is for EPA to look at. The next is another one, is a precursor modeling demonstration. This is an optional report that I'll be going into a little bit. The Emission Inventory, this is where we are required to develop several different types of emission inventories. This document is the beginning of just what's called the baseline, and it just identifies where the emissions are coming from, from which group or sector. Then we have Best Available Control Analysis, which is probably where you are going to want to be focusing. That's where the majority of this actual presentation that Bob will be giving will be focused on the, oops, it went backwards. The best available control measures, the best available control technologies are for point sources. We'll go, I'll go over a little bit with that. And then, really important, is the Ultra Low Sulfur Fuel Cost Analysis. This is one of the only actual cost evaluations we've done to this point. So, that's something that you should really pay attention to. That would be the other thing I would suggest reading. We have one of the authors here tonight, so later in the questions and answers, if there are questions, we have someone here who is help author that, who can answer that, hopefully answer some of those. So, one thing to take away about these preliminary drafts, they do not include any decisions. There's no decisions here. They are not complete. I can't emphasize that enough. This is very rare to come out without a complete, these are not complete drafts. And we've tried to put areas to identify where they're not complete with either dark gray boxes or tables that show what we've done to date, or what's included in a preliminary draft, and what is still under construction. And these gray boxes have, are focusing areas where you might want to pay attention. So, if you get some of these big documents, you just want to scroll through really fast, you'll see the areas that are under construction, or see areas where we could use more input. And so, if you really want to focus into that, which we try to give visual cues to help with your review, and, and see if you can't provide additional information. Example would be how much people are using number one versus number two fuel oil, because that would help with some of the analysis we're doing. And then, besides having the local community have an option to look at these, we're really trying to push EPA in actually giving us comments. They typically don't like to put things in writing, especially this early in the process. They'd rather see it after it's all done. But we need some, we need some information from them. So, this is a strategy to not to get, to not only, you know, provide information for the community to have a full-picture dialogue, but it's also an attempt to float some ideas to EPA that they're probably not going to be completely comfortable with, but we're going to, we have it out there, and we're pushing them for actual comments. So, I just wanted to show this as one of the tables, as an example of, one of the tables that are included that shows that, for this particular item, what's in the preliminary draft and what's still under construction. So, this is one of the inventory pages. It's just, it's just an illustration of that. So, one of the documents I'd like to give a little overview on is the precursor analysis. Again, this is a optional technical analysis. So, the new, another thing that happened in 2015 that was, that made a big impact, a huge milestone item, is EPA finally promulgated new regulations that were focused specifically on PM 2.5. We developed the moderate SIP without specific regulations. The regulations up to that point were in preamble's or just PM 10. So, now we have rules, new rules, that we didn't have, new guidance, new opportunities. We actually lost some flexibilities in some areas that, that are now we have to deal with, that we didn't have before. So, I want to make sure it's a, it's a really important point, because it could come back in the future when you go, why was there changes? Well, the rules changed at the federal level. So, one of the options, though, that was advantageous for us was the ability to do what's called a precursor determination. And precursors are one of the gases that are released that combine together in the atmosphere and create a particulate. So, you have direct PM 2.5, which is the product of combustion, that's wood smoke, exhaustion of tailpipe. It's, it's the particulates that we normally think about. But the rules state we have to also look at these precursor gases, and we have to control them. So, that's hard for the public to understand, because they're like, well, it's wood smoke. But when we talk about a different pollutant, they don't understand that. And so, what's important to come away with this is that not only direct PM 2.5 we have to control, we have to control precursors. So, the precursor documents, pollutants are listed here. Volatile organic compounds, VOCs, nitrogen, nitric, and noxides, I think I said that wrong, ammonia, and sulfur dioxide, or SO2. So, the precursor option, analysis option, said that if you go and do the analysis, this analysis, and you show that a precursor is not significant, then you do not have to do controls for that precursor. That's huge. Okay? The biggest thing on this list is NOx. It says we don't have to do NOx controls, which is your IM program. By doing this precursor demonstration, we do not have to do an IM program for vehicles, which their biggest pollutant would be nitrous oxides. So, that's just the, you know, getting to the chase, why this document is so important. This document is also very important for the point sources, and I'll get into the point sources here in a bit. But unfortunately, we couldn't knock out all of the precursors. We still have to deal with sulfur. We tried, but we weren't able to do, sulfur has too much of a contribution. So, that's what the precursor demonstration summary is about. So, Best Available Control Technology. This is, this is really hard on the, on the point sources, your major utilities. This is where they are supposed to look at each individual unit on their facility, standing alone, what is the best control technology that they have to do, and they're supposed to do them. Regardless of their, how much they contribute, whether or not it would do, controlling them will bring you into attainment, back is supposed to happen. So, the precursor determinations plays an important part in the initial, from their analysis. So, the back, the stationary sources have been working on this for about three years. We contacted them three years ago, saying, we're going serious, you need to start working on your analysis. It was very expensive for them. What they found from this, from their back determination analyses, and DEC did this work, is that direct PM 2.5 is being controlled adequately by the point sources, their baghouses, all those things. So, there'll be no, we're not proposing any new controls for our direct PM 2.5. So, I know that goes contrary. People see the plumes, they think that's the, the reason there's a PM 2.5 problem. It's mostly gases and steam. It's, we've had now another review, and the backed analysis, preliminary determination that we have out right now is that there would be no new point source, direct PM 2.5 controls for the point sources. The precursor determination has, we did not have to do any controls for VOCs or NOx. Now, the backed analysis shows that there are feasible measures for point sources to do NOx controls, but we don't have to. And that's, that's even more money that we're saying, no, they don't have to do, and, you know, EPA's not going to approve this until we turn the SIP in formally, but we're putting it out there right now. We think we've got it solid. We've been working with EPA, and now we're having it out for the public to, or other entities, NGOs, or whatever, to look at our findings. However, we still couldn't do SO2. SO2, by the backed determinations and the precursors, still identify sulfur is required. So, we have preliminary, this is preliminary again, no decisions, but preliminary thought that we have for the backed, these major stationary sources, is dry sorbitance injection and ultra-low sulfur diesel. And you'll see here, I want to point out the efficiencies. These efficiencies are 80%, 99%, 75%. And if you look at the community burden, which is not required by backed, but DEC is looking at it as, as a community burden, is almost $54 million in capital cost alone. All right? So, this is backed for the point sources. However, there's also other options for control sources, for control measures for sulfur. And we've gone out on something new with that, and that's located in the possible concepts and potential approaches, that we're floating to EPA, and we're making this pretty much kind of a first stand, and saying that we're not going to propose any other control measures on the point sources, even though there are other control measures on the point sources for sulfur that have higher efficiency rates. But if, as you can see, one is 1,003 million, and the other is 160 million. Our challenge is going to be that there's going to be a requirement to do most stringent measures, to extend our, our attainment date, and we think that EPA may be wanting us to do more, one control measure, but move to a more stringent measure, and their definition would be 103 million. We're trying to take the stance that that's not, that's not what this community can handle. We probably couldn't handle the 53 million, but we sure as well couldn't necessarily handle 103 million or 160 million. So, I want to point this out, that this is all preliminary, but this is the, this is the potential impact on your stationary sources. And it was important to get this information out, so you can see, start being, start seeing the effects that are happening across all the sectors. So, you have all the information to make decisions, to help make decisions on, on trade-offs, or what, you know, try to look for different kind of options. But this is, this is what we're saying is off the table from the DEC perspective, and we'll see what EPA has to say about, about this. We are pushing the envelope on this one by, by taking, trying to take these off the table. So, that concludes my portion, and then I'm going to give it over to Bob, and he can give you all the wonderful news about best available control measures.
Thank you. For the record, I want to welcome Mike Meeks with the City of Fairbanks Council.
Hi, I'm Bob Della from Sierra Research, and I guess I'm not here to win a popularity contest tonight, because I'm going to talk about the control measures that the community still has in front of them. The final rule, the PM 2.5 final rule that came out last year identified a series of steps that you're supposed to follow when you identify control measures that are supposed to be implemented. And what the Clean Air Act has specified is they envision communities having trouble coming into attainment. It's not like you get one chance, but they realize that you're going to get close maybe the first time, and then you're going to have succeeding efforts that require a little bit more stringency each time. And they've specified a process that goes for that. And in this case, for PM 2.5, there are five steps that you have to, oops, I should put this up here. There are five steps that you're supposed to follow if you're going to identify control measures. And the first one is to develop an emissions inventory for the community. For those of you that aren't familiar with that, that means that you're supposed to estimate on a, on a, under a set of conditions that represent those that lead to high concentrations that have been selected with EPA, you're supposed to estimate what's emitted into the atmosphere each hour of the day for every source in the community. And so, we've divided the community up into grid cells. We know how many houses are in there. We know where the businesses are located. We know where the point sources are located. We've done all kinds of surveys to collect information on how the community...
I think maybe we need you to speak a little closer to the mic.
Time to look to this, I'll just look here.
Thank you. Does that work?
Say it.
Better?
Sorry. So, there's a lot of effort that goes in to estimate what the inventory looks like, because you need to know, you know, who has the most influence on your problem? Who's the biggest source? What are they, so that you know where to focus your controls? So, that's the first step. The next step is, because you're, you're in a serious plan, is you're supposed to go out and identify what all the best controls are. When you did a moderate SIP, you were supposed to identify what all the reasonable controls were. And so, the whole concept here is, the ones you adapted before weren't good enough, they didn't provide enough reduction. So, you need to look around the country and see what everybody's implemented that's been successful, and you're supposed to identify the best ones in each of those communities, and you're supposed to look back at your own program locally and decide what you're missing. And those that you're missing, you're supposed to determine whether or not they're feasible. And so, the second step was to go out and run that survey across all of the programs. The third step is, once you've identified those measures, let's say that you've identified 100, you're supposed to go through and, and prepare a technological feasibility analysis. Does it work in an Arctic environment? What's the technology that's being used? How does it fit in? Has this measure already been implemented in the community? Because what happens when you look at these controls and you run a survey is, every other community that has an air quality problem has a complex set of rules that are out there. And so you can't just look at a little piece of the rule. You have to look at the rule and see what kind of exemptions that are out there that that community has so that you really can put in perspective a portion of the rule that you're looking at to see if it's more stringent and it's something the borough has to consider. So you identify and you wean through that first set of 100 measures and identify which ones are technologically feasible. And you write that up and you document it. And the third step is you, or the fourth step rather, is you do an assessment of economic feasibility. Economic feasibility in our lingo is basically what's the dollars per ton of pollutant removed? So that you have a source over the course of the year, how many tons of pollutant are emitted into the atmosphere and what's the cost per ton? It's a leveling metric that allows you to look and see, are, is this one too expensive relative to other ones? And the way EPA has set this process, the Clean Air Act has set this process up is they purposely want you to look at things that are more expensive than you did in the moderate SIP. Moderate SIP wasn't successful enough, so the measures you pick are supposed to hurt a little bit more, they're supposed to be more expensive, but you still need a way of grading them. So you do this economic feasibility. And then the final step is if you've, you've been through, you've identified what the measures are, you've assessed their technological feasibility, you find out which ones are economically feasible, the little subset that you have left, hopefully it's little, you have to look and see if it can be implemented in this timeframe. Right now, the borough is supposed to come into attainment by 2019. And so the question is which of these measures can effectively be implemented in this timeframe? And if they can't, doesn't mean that they go away. You're going to have to consider them in subsequent years, but they'll have a different title to them. So my job was to go through and prepare this analysis and that's what I want to talk about. So the next, the next slide talks about the first step. Would you do that for me? Thank you. And, you know, this is, the original baseline was for 2008. The one for this upcoming serious SIP has been selected to be for 2013. I can explain why, but there's a lot of details for it. And I could give you a lot of numbers, but the bottom line is that for directly emitted PM 2.5, residential space heating is responsible for 62% of it. So it's the major player in directly emitted PM 2.5. And it's emitted under the inversion layer, not above the emergent inversion layer. The second component is point sources. They're responsible for about 32%. But there's a huge amount of buoyancy, thermal buoyancy that when you emit from a stack of a, of a point source that carries those pollutants up high into the atmosphere. And so that 32% is emitted at a different layer. We have models that try and account for that, but there are differences. The other 8% comes from what we call other area, other components and mobile sources. And so it's a relatively small player. NOx, as Cindy said, because of the precursor analysis, we don't need to consider controls, but point sources are responsible for 64% of it and on-road vehicles are about 22% of it. If NOx was not dismissed, you would have to be considered in IM program because there are IM programs in the country that are much more, that are stringent because of ozone problems. The other issue that's important is for SO2. And for space heating, which is home heating, which is the dominant source of heat in the community, 67%, two-thirds of it comes from SO2, comes from oil-based home heating. So it's a very important player. And so the question is what kind of controls are available to look at that source? So this is what the inventory does is help guide us in thinking about where we need to identify controls. All right. The next slide, if you go there, is, we had to take a look. Well, the first thing we have to look at, this new rule, the final PM 2.5 rule, is you have to go look at what measures you dismissed when you did the reasonably available control measure analysis for the moderate SIP. Moderate SIP identified 50-something measures and it dismissed a lot of those measures. And so the first measures you're supposed to look at were those that you rejected last time. Were they more feasible this time? 27 were rejected because they were technologically infeasible, two were too expensive. And so we had 29 measures right off the bat that we were supposed to take a look at. The next step is to take time and look at all the control programs that are in place for other communities across the country that have a particular problem. And we looked all over, there's a lot of them. You'd have to look at the regulations there, you have to look at the regs here. You don't do a detailed analysis. You try and identify what you think are controls that are likely to be more stringent and you put them on the list. We found 59 additional potential controls that need to be considered. So all of a sudden, we're up to 88 measures that we had to take a look at. But when we looked at them, once we had this big list, we saw that there was a lot of overlap between the previous analysis for the moderate SIP, the rack of measures that were rejected, and those that we identified in other communities. So we consolidated. We also decided to identify all the transportation control measures as one measure. So you have IM, you have different types of what are called transportation control measures, which is a lot about ride sharing and things like that to increase the density of people operating in vehicles. We kind of took all of those measures and put them in there as to one category because vehicles still contribute. And one of the things that was important in this final rule was it eliminated the concept of de minimis. De minimis means that if you got below some threshold, it had to be figured out what it was, you didn't have to do anything. This final rule eliminated that concept. Everybody's in the boat. If you contribute, you're, you know, you're a potential candidate for control. And so they needed to be considered, so vehicles needed to be considered as well. So ultimately, once we assembled all of this, we identified 71 measures that we needed to take a look at, which was a lot of work in terms of doing the feasibility for it. Next slide, please. So when we did the analysis of these measures, we ended up breaking them into three categories. We found those that we determined were equal to or less stringent than the controls that you have in place, those that were so close to what you had that it was impossible to figure out what the benefit for it was, and those that are clearly more stringent. And so we have these three categories and that's what we'll talk about next. So out of the 71 measures that we have for analysis, we found that 45 of them we decided were equal to or less stringent. 63% of those measures we dismissed. We were aggressive in dismissing measures. We found thresholds that were less stringent. We found equivalent requirements. We found those that had more curtailment exemptions in terms of borough, what you have as borough listed devices, other communities had more, they had more for that rule, we dismissed it. Some of them depended on natural gas availability. Others had the use of registered professionals, for example, in confirming the installation of a device and it was a checkmark. The borough has something that's more stringent. We dismissed that. Another one sets a ban, Los Angeles does not allow you to sell anything but dry wood from the end of the summer through the end of the winter. But you have a rule in place that says people can't burn wood that's, that's wet. You can only burn dry wood. So we said your rule trumps that, so we don't put it in place. You have a requirement in the borough, that's, that's what you have to do. So we rejected those measures. Another category was we found communities that had controls that restricted or eliminated hydraulic heaters, but they did it for nuisance reasons. Those benefits were never included in a state implementation plan. No air quality credit was taken for them. And so if we found measures that were not in an air quality plan, we dismissed them. We were pretty aggressive about dismissing measures that we didn't think would provide a benefit to the borough. Now, the problem, I want to be upfront about this, is that EPA may come back with a very different view of the work that we've done. And so we'll talk more about that in a minute. The next slide, please. We ended up identifying a dozen measures where, quite frankly, we didn't know how to quantify them. For example, I think it's, um, it's in Oregon that they have, Puget Sound has a $30 surcharge that they put on the sale of all the devices, all the wood burning devices, solid fuel devices. What's the benefit from that? How do you quantify that? How is that money spent? What's the air pollution benefit from it? We threw our hands up and said, we don't know how to quantify that. You know, some of them, it wasn't clear that it was, it was, or some it appeared that they would increase emissions in an arctic environment and others it wouldn't have any benefit. Maine has rain caps. I don't see a lot of benefit for that in the borough. I don't know how to quantify that. Some of them had slightly different stack height differences that they had to have, but the boundary differences were not clear. And so figuring out who to do the trade-off, it wasn't really obvious. So we, there were another one was that you had, you had to put a decal on a window to, so that you knew that they were certified to participate as an OAS. You know, Nick has that on a laptop and the people in the field have that. So they're going to know which homes have what. So what's the benefit of putting a decal on a window? I don't know how to quantify that. We threw those out. We actually shared copies of that with EPA first off to see what their reaction was going to be. And they came back and said, well, we want more documentation for this, but they didn't disagree. So that's another 17%. So out of those 71 measures, we rejected 80% of them. But we also found, as in the next slide, we found 14 measures that were more stringent that under the back home process, you're supposed to implement. And these are measures that obviously you're going to want to consider. I'm not going to talk about each one because we could spend a couple of hours doing that, but it's important to know. Some of it was actually helpful and, and informed us. A number of the measures, I think five of the 14 focus on new construction and what they'll allow to go into new construction. They're more restrictive. Some of the communities, one of the communities says you can't have any solid fuel heating in new construction. None. One of those says it can only be pellet stoves. That's it. Nothing else. Others restrict based on the density of the area and say that no fireplaces can go in and you can only have two wood burning devices in an acre. There are different categories that are out there, different communities deal with it separately. But a number of these focused on new construction. Another category that surprised us, but we found in all of the communities, a lot of the communities out there, was they targeted rental units because they were concerned that people who were using rental units were less concerned about complying with rules and they wanted to make sure that those rental units did not have wood burning as the sole source of heat. And that they demanded that you retrofit them in some cases with an alternative source, which would be a very significant effort. But when you stop to look at it, we'd never really gone to the level of detail to figure out what fraction of the community is rental, what the behavior of people in rental units looks like. But the borough has a lot of turnover from the military. There are people that are moving through here on relatively short periods and it may be that they're not as focused on dealing with air quality concerns as if they were going to be longtime citizens here. So there are a number of measures that focus on rental units. Other categories that are in there that are important and I'll talk more about is ultra-low sulfur fuel. We looked at this in the moderate SIP and we rejected it as too expensive at the time because of the cost increase that the borough would see. EPA came back and was outraged that the borough wasn't more aggressive about considering it. It turns out all of the Northeast states have adopted ultra-low sulfur fuel as a control strategy. And it also turns out that most of the rural communities in the state are only burning ultra-low sulfur fuel. So it makes it a lot harder to walk away from that control measure given the fact that other communities in Alaska are using it and all of the states in the Northeast are using it. I can explain more, but that's a control measure that is out there. One of the measures that was a leftover from the moderate SIP was increasing the coverage of district heat. District heat is a wonderful measure. Downtown is heated largely with steam or hot water. And so you don't have stacks, you know, that are emitting downtown. And it's, you know, it's using waste heat from there, from the Aurora facility. But we found, and they ran a study, they commissioned a study back in 2000, I think it was about 2006 or 2008, that actually quantified the cost of what it would be to extend district heat to the commune, to other parts of the community. And it wasn't cheap, it was very expensive. And so what I've done in here is I've tried to, we haven't done the analysis yet, but I've tried to list which, which measures I think are feasible from an economic feasibility analysis, which are going to be cost-effective. It's kind of hard to argue that controls on new construction are not cost-effective. It's really difficult to do that. So I'm expecting those will be feasible. Some of them are a little bit more wobblers. One of them, for example, is the ultra-low sulfur heating and I'll talk about that. I don't think that district heat, the expansion of that system is going to be cost-effective. So there's going to be a winnowing of this category, but unfortunately, what I'm here to tell you is that while we've, we've winnowed down this list of 71 measures to 14, which is an 80% reduction, this assumes that EPA agrees with the criteria that we use to dismiss a lot of those other measures. It also means that EPA may identify other controls. And these controls were focused strictly on the residential community. We're in the process of looking at it for commercial establishments. We're looking at charbroil, we're looking at coffee roasting, we're looking at other sources that may have additional controls that need to be considered because they're all contributed to the problem. So this 14, while it's very onerous and I appreciate that, it's not the end of the list that you may have to deal with. So on the next page, I basically run, I kind of basically say the same things, that it's likely to expand. We're looking at the commercial controls. And that wherever you end up rejecting may come back after 2020 is what's called most stringent measures. The way the, the way the rule is written, you have reasonably available control measures, best available control measures and most stringent measures. I've worked on that in other communities where you've had to do that. And we had to allow, not just, just look and see what's best, you end up rejecting things because they're too expensive. If you're still out of attainment and it turns out another community has implemented something as, you have to implement it because it's most stringent and your flexibility in rejecting measures is diminished. And that's what happens if you don't demonstrate attainment by 2019. On the next page, we have a listing of what the, kind of the requirements are that mandate this. These requirements show up in the, in the CFR and they require you to adopt and implement. The way, you know, normally you come up with a plan and it's got all the components that Cindy identified, but the back-end document is independent of the SIP. You do the analysis, you identify the measures, you give them to the community. It's not, it's not, theoretically, it's not even a negotiable part, but I think it's something the community is going to want to negotiate and want to consider how to find things that are acceptable. And that's obviously something that Nick is going to talk about. I think I've said enough about this slide. The next, the one, and the final one I got has to do with ultra-low sulfur distillate fuel. UAF and a DEC economist, Dr. Joe Little, and, and his students have been supporting DEC to prepare this draft economic analysis. And we went out to take a look at what information is available and it's really pretty surprising. There was, a while back in early 2000s, Congress mandated a program to evaluate the benefits of ultra-low sulfur district fuel. Every gallon sold in the country in participating states had to contribute money to fund this organization to do the research. A lot of work was done. NICE started off for New York, took a look at what the, they had extensive programs to take a look at what the heating expenses were in homes, what the efficiency of boilers were before and after. They really did an extensive job quantifying it. Prokavin National Laboratories did a lot of research in pollutants to understand what the emission levels were at different levels of sulfur. So they could see the impact on sulfur and PM that was emitted. And that work ultimately led to the Northeast states adopting rules that mandated their refineries to produce the ultra-low sulfur fuel to choose to heat all the homes. And that meant, right now, you've got a mix of number one and number two. Number one is probably up around 850 ppm sulfur, particemillion sulfur. Ultra-low sulfur is at 15. It's a very, very significant reduction and provides a very real benefit. And so you have that, that has been adopted in other areas. When they did it in the Northeast, the cost, the incremental cost that they identified was three cents a gallon. One of the things that was done when the transportation, the way this came about is highway, vehicles on highways were required to use ultra-low sulfur diesel fuel. And that was mandated to come into place in 2006. Alaska had problems introducing that into the rural communities and they asked for an extension. And there was a lot of work done to take a look at what the costs were of doing that. And that work provided the basis for the adoption of the rule because what happened was when that rule was adopted in rural communities is they don't have a lot of extra tank space. So the fuel that goes into the diesel engines also goes into heating homes. It's the same. And so they ultimately consolidated and all the homes in the rural communities, or most of them, are now using ultra-low sulfur distillate fuel. It's not like it's not technologically feasible. It is. It's technologically feasible in an arctic environment, not just in the Northeast. So it makes it something that you have to look at. So DEC commissioned a survey, there are firms that track what the prices are of every fuel transaction. Its name is Opus, I forgot what it stands for, I can find it. And they contracted with Opus to track the difference between ultra-low sulfur and number one and number two in Anchorage and in Fairbanks. And the results that came back showed that the price increment is much higher than what they saw in the Northeast. It ranged between 34 cents a gallon for number two to 43 cents a gallon for number one. No, the other way around. And so it's very significant. And faced with that kind of expense, you then have to figure out what's that do to the average home and their expenditures? How does that work? Because, you know, everybody knows that if the price goes up, you're going to use less of it. Or you're going to search for alternatives. And in this case, the search for alternatives turns out to be really important because the most, one of the most likely candidates as an alternative is burning more wood. If you burn more wood, you have to trade off what the emission rate is for burning wood versus what the emission rate is for burning ultra-low sulfur fuel. It's not one order of magnitude, it's multiple orders of magnitude. It's huge. So it doesn't take much of an increase in wood burning to offset a lot of the benefit. But the real challenge, and Dr. Little can answer all your questions about this, or he's going to try, is what, what elasticity, that's a term that, that quantifies how people respond to changes in price, what well represents the community so that you have a realistic estimate of what that shift is likely to be? And the whole analysis in telling the community what the benefits are and telling EPA whether or not this measure can really be adopted, really boils down to that analysis. It's relatively easy for him to quantify how much less fuel people are going to burn if the price goes up. There's, there's lots of information out there to address that. Figuring out how much people shift towards burning wood, that's a much bigger challenge, but it's a much more important question. And so that's something that's facing the community. So as Cindy said, we don't have all the answers to this and there's lots of challenges that are out there. But we have a starting list of these 14 measures. We submitted it, DEC has submitted TPA to take a look at. We haven't gotten any feedback from them yet. We're very interested to see what we're here, going to hear. And in the meantime, we're concentrating on looking at commercial controls and collecting the information we need to do the cost effectiveness analysis, the economic feasibility analysis for those 14 measures that we've identified. That's my presentation.
Thank you. Before you proceed, I want to reflect, the record to reflect that we've been joined by Councilmember Cruz. Thank you.
So I'm going to wrap up the DEC portion before you get to, I'm here, Nick with his possible, how to go forward from this and give you the timeline that everybody's always asking. And that is, you know, we're looking for additional information, we're hoping to get the additional information by the, by May 23rd if possible. In the meantime, as Bob mentioned, we're continuing to work on all the pieces that we've identified that are under construction. That work continues. Ideally, it would be very helpful if we got that list of 14 or any new ideas. At the very last page of the Concepts and Approaches list, a number of questions on ideas for additional control measures that aren't on this list, but are ideas to, you know, find these balances and these trade-offs. So if we could get, you know, a list sometime between, you know, May-June, then we could be able to start modeling in July and August with the hope that we could have a formal document out by the last quarter of this year. So that's still very aggressive. A lot of it depends on, on if we can get some kind of a list that the community finds, you know, what they could possibly do. It doesn't mean you have to have the ordinances in place by then, but it's a, it's a list that we can start the modeling on and give more information as we refine down to, you know, what, what's possible. Looking at everything as a big picture. You look at the point sources and what they're looking at. We're looking at ultra-low sulfur, which is all the home heating, not just the woodburners anymore, it's everybody. It's not just homeowners, it's commercial vendors as well. I think ULSD is being looked at across the community, every wholesale, ULSD across the board, everybody. Homeowners, business owners, you know, you saw that, it backed, you know, everybody. Then you have the, you know, you have the wood control measures that you're mostly have been struggling with over the last couple of years. And also, these lists are based on what you already have in place. If you start passing ordinances that relax or loosen up your existing measures, you're going to add more items to the list. Okay? I think it's really important you guys understand that. You started out with some really pretty solid control measures, but there's been thoughts about maybe loosening some of that up because there's been some pushback and some concerns. But what that will do is that will increase your list. We also know that EPA is going to come back with more. So our timeline is, you know, we're supposed to have a SIP in by the end of the year. We're hoping that there's a possible few next steps to try to address this and I'll let Nick go in what, what his program is, is looking at as, as some options.
Well, thank you, Cindy. So for those of you that don't know me, I'm Nick Zornicki and I'm the air quality manager for the borough. So we've just heard about an hour talking about some of the regulatory requirements and some of the other things on here. And what I'm going to do is try to tie that together into what's the, what's the borough's role in this as the local agency? And what are some of our, you know, options going forward or what's a possible path And so the borough's role in implementing back home, the borough is going to take the lead on implementing control measures for area sources, so for space heating and for control measures for area sources, so for space heating and for those types of sources. And I want to stress here that more controls are needed to, number one, bring the area into attainment. That's what the Borough is really focused on, is what needs to be done to clean up the air. And the second in the Borough's mind is complying with all of the federal regulations that you just heard about. It's an important step, but we're really concerned more about what needs to be done to get the air clean than what needs to be done to follow the CFR. Eventually, this is going to require some action from the Assembly, as Cindy and Bob talked about, and put out that list of 14 additional sources, or 14 additional control measures. And so this is really important that we cannot ignore this issue anymore. We're at a pivotal point with some really tough choices for the community coming up. It's always easy to ignore these and kick the can down the road, but ignoring the issue at this point in the game is basically going to mean that you have no say in what happens because that process that Denise talked about, that's going to move on whether or not the Borough decides to get involved and this community decides to get involved. And so this is really the community's chance to have some say in what happens going forward. And so what are the steps moving forward? Step one is to take a look at the information that Sierra Research and DEC have compiled and to take a hard look at the preliminary list of control measures and determine, you know, first of all, can the community implement any of these control measures? Are these, you know, are these palatable? They are definitely, as Bob said, they're onerous. It is going to be difficult, but as a community, we need to take a hard look and say, can any of these be implemented? Now, one of the things in DEC's Concepts and Approaches document says that, you know, a lot of these technologically feasible measures appear to offer limited benefit. So that gets back to my first point. You know, when we're looking at these control measures, which ones are really going to help us solve the problem and which ones are being done just to fulfill a regulatory And so once we take a look at that, this is where we do have a little bit of flexibility. And it's an idea of equivalent control measures. So when we look through that initial list and figure out that, you know, some of the control measures are not palatable or can't be implemented in this community, we have the option to take a look and say, well, can they be tweaked a little bit? Can they be modified so that they fit for the community? And if not, is there a substitute control measure that would offer equivalent emission reductions that we could present as an equivalent control measure? Now, I want to say that it's going to require robust analysis and a lot of work to not only come up with these control measures, but then to, you know, get the data behind them that says that these are going to be equivalent to what's been set in BACOM because that sets the minimum bar that we have to clear. One of the examples, you know, could be, and this is a very loose example, would be if the community decides that ultra-low sulfur diesel is too much of an economic burden at about 40 cents a gallon and says that, okay, we're, even though that, you know, is gone through and it's technologically feasible and economically feasible, that the community just can't handle the burden. So the community could decide that, well, we're going to make a commitment to increase enforcement of curtailment, for example, to see some additional emission reductions on that end. And it would be up to the Borough and the state to put together an analysis to show that this is equivalent. And so that's just a rough example and it'll be a difficult task. But what it does is, this is really a piece of flexibility that the community has instead of taking that regimented regulatory approach of just blanketly adopting those 14 BACOM And so how would we go about doing this? The community is facing a burden here. It's pretty evident with looking at the burden on the point sources and the burden of BACOM and all of the different economic burdens, along with the health impacts of the PM 2.5, that it's definitely facing a burden. And when other communities have been faced with this issue, they have found that a stakeholder group has proven to be an effective method to let everyone with an interest have a say in how the community moves forward because these decisions can't be made in a vacuum. The Borough air quality staff and DEC can't sit behind closed doors. We can't just have the Assembly doing this. You know, this would require buy-in from the entire community with a group that includes the wood burning community, point sources, the business community, you know, regular home heaters that would be affected by the ULSD, along with the typical regulatory agencies and, you know, government agencies like the Assembly. And this stakeholder group would provide a platform for all these interested parties that have skin in the game. And at this point, and after these presentations, I think it's pretty evident that the entire community has skin in the game with how this process moves forward. And the group would be tasked with reviewing those control measures and really taking a hard look and determining which ones of these can be implemented, which ones can be tweaked a little bit, and then the really difficult work of the control measures that cannot be implemented, substituting other control measures and figuring out which ones would be equivalent to come up with a package that the community can live with instead of that regimented regulatory, just we'll take what BACOM throws at us and implement it. And as Cindy presented, we're all in a short timeframe to do this. And that's why we have started this process with everybody gathered here is to start opening that conversation and determining how this community is going to move forward. And with that, that concludes our presentations and we can now open up the floor to questions, I believe.
Okey-dokey. I think you might have a few. I'll look for hands. I see that Mr. Roberts and then Mr. Lawrence and then Mr. Quest, and we'll keep on this one running. Mr. Roberts.
Okay, so on, I'm looking at the preliminary draft with your logo on the front, talking to DEC here. And on page six, on table three, it shows the baseline emissions for PM 2.5 and those precursors. And so assuming that we're not showing some kind of modeled number of the precursors being converted to PM 2.5, and this is direct PM 2.5 output, do we have a total number based on some type of modeling math on a per point source, per source basis, are the precursors being converted to PM 2.5 so we can see the actual effect of each of these sources? Since the purpose of going after these precursors is to ultimately lower PM 2.5.
The, it's a deceptively simple question that's got a complicated answer. Number one, this is what comes up out of a stack, it's emissions. When you do the conversion in the model, you don't estimate tons, you estimate concentrations, microgram per meter cubed. And so it means looking at what the contribution from each source is in a given location in the Borough at a specific point in time as to what the contribution in concentrations is from each of these categories. That hasn't, there's been no big accounting structure that's put together to assess that. Because as we heard before, we don't have to look at NOx, we don't have to look at VOC, we don't need to look at ammonia, we know that ammonia facilitates some of these conversions and people here can talk a lot more about that than I can. So there's no, the answer that you're looking for isn't there. Somebody could do that, but it's a lot more complicated because when you run one of these modeling runs, is there's a roughly a three-week period that's used to represent the range of temperatures and conditions and activity levels in the community. And so you have a run for each hour, for each day, for each grid cell in the community. And what you're saying is have we gone and totaled all of that up and estimated what everybody, or calculated what everybody's contribution is? That hasn't been done.
Okay. So do you think it's going to be possible that we get to that at some point? I'm looking at what you said was important for precursor in the SOX line and seeing not just point sources, but the fact that oil heating is the major component of that and wood heating is extremely small. But without having that kind of math, I can't estimate what the magnitude of difference is contributing to the overall PM 2.5. And it seems like that if we're required to somehow start taking SOX into account, that there has to have been some work done in modeling this so that you have a general idea of how the different precursors are going to affect the overall PM 2.5 output.
That's fair, but you didn't ask that the first time. You were right. Just to be, to be fair. So now you're asking, what's the relative contribution of SOX overall to PM 2.5? And SOX cuts across all the sources, independent of whether it's above the inversion layer or below the inversion layer, which is another complicated factor. And we have, we have a modeler who could speak to that much better than I can, but that's an answer that we can give you.
Okay. And then I wanted to ask you, you talked about the ultra-low sulfur diesel conversion that the villages, I don't know if that's all or most have gone through. Did a lot of them have to upgrade their actual heating units and was there some type of program equivalent to like Village Safe Water where they go in and they actually upgrade the heating units to be able to handle the lower BTUs from the ultra-low sulfur diesel?
No. I mean, I didn't participate in that program, but my understanding is that there's this blend-down period in the oil that you go through so that you're reducing the sulfur gradually in the oil, because basically you've got high sulfur fuel in your tanks now. And a lot of people buy fuel in the summer, for example, that they're going to use in the winter. So if we said it had to be implemented at a date certain, you have to roll that back so that everybody is set up to run it. But there's no significant impact on the units. If anything, it's better. Because what happens is you've got less sulfur, you have less sulfate deposit on the burners, so the burners are more efficient, and you have to spend less money getting them cleaned because you don't have to have them cleaned as often. So there are real benefits and there's a lot of work that went in to quantify that.
I've, I've heard about the maintenance benefits. I didn't, but I still thought there was still a BTU difference.
BTU difference is not very significant. It's actually, if you go to the DOE website to look at it, they'll tell you it's really marginal.
So, so you don't believe that there's going to be a lot of, people are going to have to convert their heating devices if they're sufficiently heating with the current diesels that we're using?
Correct. There, there'll be some, I'm not going to say there's no, but it's not a significant effect. And so I don't think that there's a large increase in fuel use required to get the same amount of heat.
Thanks.
Thank you. And Dr. Little, if you want, we have a couple of empty seats. I don't know if you plan, if you're going to have questions, but if you want to join us up here, we can ask, you'll be readily available.
I have a lot of room.
Okay. And we can hand you the mic until. So Mr. Lawrence and Mr. Quest.
My question might be for Denise is, who will be coordinating this analysis of the economic feasibility of ultra-low sulfur heating fuel, heating oil for this community? You said the university would be involved. Who will be coordinating that study? The DEC or the Borough?
So DEC has taken the lead on putting together the technical feasibility documents that you see here and will still work on the economic feasibility. But as you mentioned, what we, what we did for the ULSD piece is we essentially subcontracted with the university and Joe Little to assist us with that process. So we're, DEC is essentially paying for that work and partnering with the university on that work. But we of course want, part of the reason that we have published these documents and you can see that work is we're, we're very open to feedback on all the pieces.
Well, just as a follow-up, I think it's pretty clear that increasing the price of fuel oil will drive people, you know, some people to burn more wood. And so it seems to me this analysis will have to try to predict, you know, what the impact will. And I think it was stated earlier, it's not going to be that hard to figure out how much less fuel will be burned because of the increase in price. The big question is how much more wood is going to be burned. But we also have to figure out how much wood, I mean, you know, how much PM 2.5 is being generated by that increase of wood burning as compared to how much is being saved by decreasing the amount of sulfur in the air. So, I mean, there's a lot of factors there and, you know, I'm hoping it's all going to be considered.
Yes, you're absolutely correct. I mean, we are very much aware of the fact that the last thing we want to do is push more people to burn wood. I mean, it's, so that will be a factor in, in this overall analysis. We just haven't gotten yet to the, the point where we have an answer on, I think Bob had mentioned in terms of the elasticity, which is how sensitive are people to these price differences and at what point do they, do you push people to, to burn wood? That's still a question that we're looking at, but we don't have the answer for that yet.
Mr. Quest.
Thank you. I have two questions if I can. On page five of the first presentation, the, the emission inventory for direct sources of PM 2.5, there's space heating, point sources and other, those add up to 102%. So I was curious about that. And then also, where in here is commercial space heating?
Well, as we mentioned, the commercial space heating hasn't been completed yet. That's being looked at right now. So that's not included right, or we're working on it, it's in progress?
Yeah. I think you were on the right page.
That was the right page.
Oh, in this?
Yeah.
Okay. See where I have?
We can't hear you.
I'm sorry.
Microphone, microphone.
Commercial sources are included right now in the other area category. That's what that means. We, we have been working to collect more information on commercial activity. I'm sorry, I'm not using. Oh, thank you. You know, all of our surveys have been focused, quite frankly.
You need to hold it to your mouth.
Am I doing it right now? No. I pushed it in. Did I?
You've got to be right on it.
Not working, sorry.
Okay.
Okay, let me just speak louder.
Come up close.
All right. So there's, a lot of our activities have focused not on commercial fuel use. A lot of the big boxes in town use natural gas for heating, for example. We don't know a lot about what kind of fuel is used in gas stations to heat them, for example, and lots of other commercial facilities. We haven't concentrated on that. We use, DEC comes up with a inventory that they estimate, and they've estimated what that activity is and one that they submit to EPA every three years. We've been using that to represent the community. Where now, we were actively asking people for information, for example, about how much coffee is roasted so that we know what the fuel use is for that. And we've had differential responses about people not wanting to answer it, for example. We're looking at information about charbroiling that's going on out there. We haven't really done a lot of work on charbroiling for the community. And like I said before, we don't know a lot about the rental community. It's kind of, it's a lot of work to characterize the activity levels for some of these categories. But now that we're looking at the control programs that have been implemented in other areas, we have to come up with better estimates to represent them. At this time, they're not a significant source of directly emitted PM 2.5.
Okay, so if, I have a clarifying question, then maybe my other question if I can now, but it adds up to 102%?
This does?
Yes.
Okay. Well, no, that's not supposed to, the first one adds up to, okay, yes, it does. I get it. There's a rounding error in there, obviously.
Okay. And I was just curious, maybe I was misunderstanding it. Okay, otherwise, so the, the current SIP and the next SIP, a lot, a lot of it depends on local regulation. For years, we didn't have the ability to even regulate it. This fall, you're probably aware, there's an initiative that if it were to pass, would remove our ability to regulate this locally. And I think that would last for at least two years. Let's say something like that did happen, okay, what impact would that have on this and how would we reach attainment if the Borough didn't have the ability?
Okay. If you want to take that.
I'll, and then feel free to add, say, yes, we are, we are of course aware that that's a potential. And if that were to come to pass, then the full responsibility for implementing controls and selecting controls would fall to the state DEC. And we would probably, essentially we would be losing the strong partnership that we have with the Borough and the resources that the Borough brings to bear. We wouldn't be able to be, we wouldn't have the resources to be as flexible, I think, as you can be at a local level, sort of the things that Nick is talking about with the stakeholder group and talking to everybody who has, has skin in the game. You know, Nick can do that because he lives here in Fairbanks and we don't. I mean, those are the sort of things that would be different if the state had, had the, the program. But the state would have to make some, some decisions about then what the controls would be and what we'd implement. I'm sure if you wanted to add to that.
When we did the, the reason for the moderate SIP, those, those, the initiative was in force at that time. And so we rejected a number of the measures back then because it was in force. Because the rule that was used at the time as the template for making decisions included a category called social acceptability. The community is really fundamentally against a measure. You could document that, you could document the reasons why, and you could dismiss the measure. We did that. The new rule that came out eliminated that flexibility. That's no longer there. It's not a reason. So the point is, if the initiative goes through, the requirement doesn't go away and the criteria to reject it doesn't exist.
Thank you.
Okay, so I have that next Miss Hook and then I have Mr. Lajewski and Ms. Major.
Hi, thank you for your presentation this evening. I just have a few questions. So we've got a lot of interest in the USLD analysis. And my question is, is that modeling on the air quality zone, the non-attainment area or the Borough wide for ultra-low sulfur diesel? Are we looking smaller? How big of an area are we looking to implement?
Are you required to implement it for the non-attainment area?
For non-attainment.
Which is practically stating, you know, most of the Borough for that matter.
Okay.
Because if you're doing it for the non-attainment area, anything outside the boundary going towards Eilson is going to be affected, for example, because they're unlikely to be getting their fuel in different places.
So just as a follow-up, the assumption is, is that if some of the homes go ultra-low sulfur diesel for the storage capability at the tank farms, that means all the homes are going ultra-low sulfur diesel?
There's no consideration at this point of implementing it in different areas or thinking that for the amount of heating that goes on in the non-winter months, that they might switch back to number one or number two. I would imagine the refiners don't find that very attractive and DEC is in the process of engaging the refiners to get their reactions.
Okay. Thank you. So we talked about that the NOx controls are not being considered for serious, but if we move to most stringent measures, the NOx controls come back into play?
No.
No.
Once, once it's knocked out with the precursor determination, it's for both BACOM and MSM.
That's good news.
Yes.
That's very good. I didn't quite understand that other stuff. So, and you, a couple of times you talk about, we're not sure what EPA will say to this, you know, you're looking for feedback, but can you just give me a little overview? What's your process with EPA now? I know you, you're not in your own silo, you probably talk at least, have monthly conversations, you share conversations back and forth. So you're not, it's not a total, you're not in the, they're not in the dark on this.
So we're, we're, well, some of it was, but we're, we're meeting with them weekly. Technical staff are almost meeting with them daily and that's going to continue. There's a lot of elements and it's really complicated trying with all the modeling and the monitoring and the different things. We have like, like yesterday's meeting could have eight people on it with the different types of EPA's technical staff that they specialize in with the people that we have working on each element. So we're trying to be very open and we work through as much as we can, but we're still dealing with the technical staff and we're looking for flexibility from their political staff. And so if we can get anything in writing, the writing goes through the political softening a little bit. And so we think if we can get something in writing and comments, we'll have a better handle on maybe some of these areas where we might have disagreements with interpretations or how we want to approach something. So one of the big ones is, is the backed determinations on, we're putting out an idea that I don't, that they haven't thought about. They're very, they're very strict about following just the rule. I mean, they're very, that's the, the technical staff want to just follow the rules as written. And we're trying to look for more flexibility, so by putting this out, we're hoping we might get some.
Thank you. Because I, that's, and I appreciate that effort that you, you have that collaborative effort with EPA. You're going to, it's going to, we're going to, what we see now won't be completely different in the fourth quarter of this year.
No, it shouldn't.
It shouldn't. And I guess just one more on the schedule and one more question. So we, you talk about the, with the stakeholders group and evaluating the BACOM measures and the concept is that review is then going to be rolled into your document for the fourth quarter? That is happening at the same time you're doing the modeling here in the summer?
That's what we would hope.
Yep.
Yeah. The difficulty will be if there's gaps, that we just don't have enough, you know, patrol measures or we don't have enough most stringent measures because we're going to need to make an extension request. And then, so we have, we have two tests with, that we have to, that we're trying to deal with, or three tests, okay? Rubber hits the road is the monitors and whether we get into attainment, all right? The other thing is, is what we project into the future because we're not going to see what happens in 2019 or 2024. We just don't know. So that's what models are for. So we're projecting, trying to guess what's going to happen in the future. So as you're trying to balance those two, you're also trying to meet the regulatory requirements, even though you, you know, you may want to change or find equivalencies. And in that case, what you do is you're trying to develop a SIP that meets the completeness determination that EPA has. So when you first turn in a SIP, they have these checkboxes of, did you do this? Did you get this? Did you do this? Did you do this analysis? Did you do this? Now, they may not find your analysis actually, you know, enough to approve it, but at least it's the first step against it complete. For example, the moderate SIP, we turned in a SIP that was complete, but until you guys passed the curtailment program, that plan was, was unapprovable. They would not have approved that plan. But you guys, this community passed curtailment programs, we pulled those into the SIP as fast as we could, we got those to EPA, they considered that as part of our initial submittal and it became approvable. So our first thing is to try to put a complete SIP in that could buy us additional time so that the community can continue to work and DEC can continue to work if we can't necessarily meet an attainable or an approvable SIP. Our first try is to try to get a SIP out that's complete. That means we meet all the checkboxes. So will that show us into attainment? It might be impractical. We don't know yet, we haven't done all the modeling, but you know, there's this, because the idea is if we don't have a complete SIP or we fail to submit, EPA will do, issue a finding of failure to submit or a finding that is incomplete and the sanction clock starts immediately upon that finding. As soon as that finding is put in the federal register, the sanction clocks start. And the sanction clocks can pause if we meet the, we get the SIP in or if we make it more complete. But anything that we are deficiencies in or something, then the sanction clocks start back up again. So we don't want the sanction clocks to start either. But, so we want to clean the air, we want to have the health-based standards, we want to get into attainment, but you're trying to juggle all this balancing with timing and we don't want to have any more, you know, consequences on the community. They're already having enough struggle as it is to try to find how we're going to bring that area into attainment. It's, we don't think it's going to help much to have sanctions on it where they start taking, you know, two to one offsets or, or, or take your federal highway dollars away. So what it is, is, you know, all this balance, and, but the failure to, that's, that's, that's coming because we were sued, you know, on January 2nd, 2015, for failing to submit on, by December 31st, a full SIP, a moderate SIP. We got the moderate SIP in January, they'd already had a court hearing. We had committed to having it in by the end of January, and we were able to do that. But that's how fast the moderate SIP was litigated if we had failed to get it in, and EPA determined it was complete within a month. And then that, then they have their time clock start on whether they're going to make it, you know, find it approvable, disapprove it, partially disapprove. So does that help put things in kind of perspective a little bit?
Excellent. Okay, so pretty good list here. Next I have Mr. Lajewski, then Ms. Major, Mr. Prus, Mayor Ward, and Mr. Pollin. Mr. Lajewski?
Sure. My question's for Cindy. Thank you for coming down. Appreciate it. You made a comment and you said that the public doesn't understand the precursor gases and nursing against. That might be true. I'm not disputing that at all. But I want to make sure you also hear that people like us, politicians and bureaucrats, we don't know how to run people's lives better than they do. But along the lines of those gases, I don't understand the science behind it. So for SO2 sulfur dioxide, right, we have direct sources of PM 2.5, just comes straight out of stacks. But what goes on chemically if you have SO2 in the air? What does it combine with? Or what's it do to make more PM 2.5?
That would be, I think it's, the precursor demonstration talks about it, but guess who we have here?
Yeah, if you want to.
Bill Simpson, who is, that's his, that's what he knows. So I am so glad you had Bill.
Can we give Bill the mic?
Does it work?
Or pull up to the public hearing table, your choice. Or trade places with Nick.
You want to come up here? Because you're going to get more comment, you're going to get more questions.
So my name's Bill Simpson. I'm from University of Alaska Fairbanks. I'm an air chemist, and I work on oxidation chemistry, which is how things get converted between oxidation states. And sulfur dioxide, SO2 that's emitted, reacts with oxidants in the atmosphere, and then that makes sulfuric acid. Sulfuric acid then sticks to particles. So you can detect the sulfuric acid in the particles, and we know by chemical analysis of particles in Fairbanks that they have sulfuric acid in them. So we know that there is sulfur that gets into the particles, and sulfur dioxide is a precursor of that.
So do we know roughly what percent of the problem is this contributing to from the sulfur dioxide?
So yes. So at the Fairbanks monitor, I mean, it's changed a little bit over time, but typically 18% of the mass of the particles at the Fairbanks monitor is sulfate that is essentially sulfuric acid without the hydrogen on it. So it's also associated with ammonium. So ammonia that's emitted in the atmosphere reacts with it and makes ammonium sulfate. And the total of that mass is about a quarter of the particle mass in Fairbanks. It's a lower percentage in North Pole because North Pole has more wood burning contribution.
Well, I've got a question for Denise then. And first I'll say, again, thanks for coming to Fairbanks again. And I think getting Professor Little involved with crunching some numbers, making some projections was very, very, very smart. He used to teach me. But I won't blame you for any of my shortcomings. But I have a problem, and I'm, just with the premise of this, so I'm hoping you can explain why you're acting the way you are. And I don't think it's because of you, but if we just look at this like a rational human being, there's no one else above us forcing any rules upon us. We see the chart from the magnitude of the problem. Right, we see the North Pole chart for PM 2.5 and the Fairbanks chart for PM 2.5. So the Fairbanks one looks like it hit a peak maybe in 2010. I'm looking at a small chart, I could be off by a year. And it looks like it was approximately 50, and it's dropped to about 40. So we've come down about 20% on the Fairbanks monitor, which is still about 35, right? It's higher than we want it to be. And then for the North Pole, we started out about 140 when we started getting our data, came down to a bit above 120, and then the most recent data point's a bit above 100. So when I see this, I can't help but make an analogy to maybe a speeding car, and we're trying to slow it down. And the brakes have been applied, especially for North Pole, it's slowing down rapidly. And what I'm hearing is, let's put on bigger brakes. And all we need to do, what I'm seeing just from the trend is, we just need to wait. It's going to keep slowing down. Why do we need worse regulations right now? So to me, that's just stupid, to put on more brakes than we could just wait and see what it's going to do. So I'm trying to get, frame this in a way, you know, like, I'm guessing it's the EPA that's forcing your hand, and so I want, I'm hoping you can explain that this madness, basically, that you're participating, and you might not see it that way.
And I'm going to give the point of order. We're having not, we're having a discussion and being curious, and we're not calling things stupid and dumb tonight. We can be curious, and we can say, I don't understand.
What makes more sense is wait for a plateau, which would mean no more progress of being made.
Well, we've, we've heard, it's interesting, we've heard, of course, there are a lot of different perspectives on this issue in the community. We've also heard from, from wood burners that they're concerned that we're only looking at wood burners, and they were the only ones who were the subject of the controls. And I alluded to at the town hall meeting, sort of the prelude for what we talked about here, which was, we have to look at this problem more holistically. And the sulfur component, although it's not the major component, it is a significant component. I think even in a, even if we weren't driven by federal rules, I don't think that you could say something that's 18 to 24% is de minimis. So that's why we need to look at it as part of the whole solution.
I guess I'm looking at like the North Pole chart, though. It's descending rapidly. And it really feels like if we just waited, because if you think about the community, right, probably not everyone's burning dry wood and everything else. So it seems like that's going to get saturated and you'll have increased participation just through time.
I agree with you in terms of this analogy that you're putting the brakes on, especially in North Pole, we're seeing this really precipitous decline, which I had mentioned earlier, it's a little bit of, is the glass half full or the glass half empty? The good news is, North Pole is making a tremendous amount of progress. The bad news is, we're not there yet. And I think the sulfur piece, as we've mentioned, it's not a foregone conclusion, because we do have to think about weighing it against whether we push more people to burning wood. But one of the, one of the items in terms of that trend line, and that sharply decreasing trend line that's important, is that it is important to do more outreach and more compliance and enforcement on, on the wood burning measures. I mean, I think that this was your first full winter where you had the new ordinance, where you just have the two stages, and you've made this tremendous amount of decrease. But it does take a little bit of time, and it will require probably higher, a higher level of compliance with those curtailments to get us a significant, that'll probably get us the most significant reductions.
Got one more, then I'm done. So for Cindy, I guess I don't, from like a cost benefit analysis, this just does not make any sense to me whatsoever. And it brings up a whole another can of worms that the rest of you might want to comment on, but we're talking about the cheapest, best available control technology for our power plants. We're looking at a little over $53 million of cost. And I look at that, and I just think, well, PM 2.5 is mostly coming from wood smoke for that cost. Let's, let's just say 53 million. Let's just suppose, I don't know the numbers, someone, one of you probably do, how many wood smoke stacks we have in the air. Those 20,000 for $2,650, we could probably equip each one with an ESP. And I know the EPA doesn't recognize it, but that stuff's been used for decades. And I'm just like, where's the ESPs in this analysis? That sounds like a lot cheaper way to, to solve the problem.
That's where you're, the stakeholder group and the items that Nick is talking about is what you look at, you know, for equivalencies or trade-offs. What we had to do with these backed determinations, backed analyses, is we're following the rules to at least have a starting point, so you, we know where we have to be. Okay? This is, this is the minimum that we have to show and meet to meet the federal requirements. What we do from this point forward, you know, is kind of, it starts a discussion. So we needed to show you what the real numbers were, the real estimates were, what reality is, and then how can we move forward and use that to possibly do ideas that you're thinking about? Where would you start? If we didn't have a place to start, you wouldn't even think about things like this. So that's the idea, is to get the conversations going when you look at the whole suite across the board of what you're facing as a community, so you can make decisions. Is it going to be 53, or is it more enforcement? Or is it, you know, precipitators might, ESPs might be something, but I don't know if you've got the data that would give a strong enough, first to pass those other tests that we would have to do with EPA. So, but you're looking at doing that. But those are all questions that have to be discussed and looked at. All we're doing is providing the basis to have this, to start the discussions, using what is required in the rules, so you have someplace to start. Just, that's technically complete, at least at this point in time. Hopefully, if we get any more information and we get these things finalized, if we've made the right assumptions, at least at the technical level. So I think the sky's open, but now you know, now you know that you have the data to work with.
Hey, Ms. Major, thanks for your patience. So I just want to stay on the sulfur comment for a moment. So in the draft analysis, it, you know, it does say that the precursor gases emitted by point sources may not contribute to the ground level concentrations. And I know you said it's, it's complex, right, and determines, you know, where they're at above the inversion point, or they carry it outside the non-attainment area. I guess my concern really is, though, with that $53 million price tag, right? 30 million of that GVEA, which would have a tremendous impact across the community as well, and to our, to the, you know, to every consumer of electricity. And so I think, you know, how confident are you that if that $53 million investment, which just seems really uneconomical, that if that investment was made, that it would actually have a positive impact to reducing PM 2.5 at the monitors and where it's kind of most critical?
Well, the unfortunate part about the rules and backed is that it's irrespective of actually how much you're going to reduce the emissions and reach attainment. So, you know, it's their SO2 portion, which is small in the big picture of things, and has this huge cost associated with it. I mean, I know it doesn't seem reasonable, but right now we're just putting out what the, what the requirements are, and what it looks like, and what the community burden is. We put those together because normally a backed analysis is just for the, for the devices. You don't look at everything holistic. We're going the steps trying to show holistically what it means to us as a, as a community for everybody.
So yeah, I just, I mean, does someone have any degree of confidence from even a scientific perspective that it would have any positive impact?
Well, it'll have an impact, but it's not going to have a, it's not going to bring attainment. I mean, they just, that SO2 for the point sources is just not that much of a contributor. You saw what the, what the percentages were.
I mean, this is where you have to start getting creative and looking at this. You're faced with a big bill, and everybody's wondering, you know, how much of a benefit is there? But what if you took some of that money and spent it someplace else? And you affected emissions that were below the inversion layer? Why can't you or your consultant come and take a look at what potential alternatives might be out there? And see whether or not you can come up with an offering for your facility that would provide substantial benefits and maybe shave your cost? I don't know if EPA would accept that, but this is what the community has to do. It needs to take what you've got and figure out what some alternatives are that are attractive to you and beneficial for the community. This is not pretty right now. We get that. But it's like the first step. You know what you're facing, so you need to start looking and be creative. I'm sorry to be so blunt, but I honestly feel strongly about it.
Yeah, then I guess I would just state back, I mean, that's unfortunately, that $53 million isn't the borough money, right? But I understand where your point is coming in the grand scheme of things. Thank you.
I would just add that, as you would imagine, we've had some of these conversations with EPA as well. I mean, EPA, I think earlier there was a question about how closely D E C works with EPA on all these pieces, and Cindy said we talk to them probably every day, but probably more formally once a week. They did look at and help us with some of, and provide some guidance and some of their thoughts on the backed determinations. These preliminary determinations were not what EPA probably would have preferred, but they did get to peek at them. So they had a sense of how much money essentially we were talking about, and relative to the population of, of the non-attainment area. I mean, even they see those numbers and think, man, I think from a management and policy perspective, they are, they understand we're the common sense issue that we're facing as well. And I think we're probably facing as flexible an EPA as we'll ever have. But as, to Bob's point, it will really be up to the, to the stationary sources or the community to, to make a counter offer to some, to some extent. I mean, they, the stationary, the stationary sources will have to do something. They do contribute, they're not the major contributor, but they do contribute, and they'll have to be part of the solution.
Mr. Prus?
Thank you. Ms. Koch, a little bit over a year ago, the City of Fairbanks, through a resolution, asked you to apply on behalf of the City of Fairbanks to remove Fairbanks from the non-attainment area and put us in attainment, because we had passed for a two-year period all measurements to be brought into the attainment area. Could you please give us a status of that request?
The split, yeah. So D E C put in a request to split the area in November of 2015. At that, that time, that was before EPA had reclassified the entire non-attainment area to serious, it was still a moderate non-attainment area. We also had, we had a good year where essentially our design value was attainment in Fairbanks, and we put in the submission. EPA has reviewed that submission, but they haven't made a final determination on that. They, they were initially very opposed to the split. And, you know, things that now, I mean, it'd be interesting to also hear from the community on what, what your perspective is on, on the split, but a lot of things have sort of changed in the, in the interim since when we first submitted the, the application.
Our measurements were from 2016 and 17, so it was updated.
So one of the things that's come out with our discussions about the split is the feeling, and they've heard from the community as well, that the State Office Building and the Ankor sites are not representative of the Fairbanks portion.
Then why are they being used?
So because those have been there for decades. Those are the CO monitors.
So if you can't, if you can't take that measurement and use it in the positive, why do you use it at all?
Well, because right now the representative monitor is the one in North Pole as a single non-attainment area. So if we were trying to split the area, they would like, they've talked about saying that you should move or add another monitor in a more representative place in the Fairbanks side of things. So that further complicates items. So you're, you start your.
Well, I'm listening to all this, phones are being expended.
Mr. Prus?
Yet I'm, I'm not understanding why a monitor was not moved when they requested that, or they thought that our monitor location wasn't a good location. So now I'm starting to look at your science skeptically at times.
Let's let her respond.
Okay.
Okay, so our monitoring manager is not here, so I will take a stab at it.
Okay, thank you Cindy.
So you're taught, you're talking, you're looking at monitors, especially the State Office Building monitor that has been there for decades. It was our main monitor. They have very, very strict rules. They don't allow you to move monitors. It is incredibly difficult. Then what happened was, the rules changed, and they said you have to have representative samples, you have to have a monitor that's representative of our high maximum impact site. So prior to 2015, the North, the borough had the monitoring program, and D E C's were working, and they had all the special purpose monitors. Remember that they were moving them around, you know, North Pole, you know, some of the other neighborhoods? And they were getting higher readings. And so they move them around just trying to get an idea, you know, what's happening. Well, they left the, that North Pole fire station monitor was there, and that became a regulatory site. And that then met the new rules that came in effect in 2015, that that would become now a representative sample for the whole area, because it's a neighborhood. It doesn't mean that there's bad readings in the State Office Building. It is what it is.
Okay, this is, this is the, this is the, this is the EPA that's doing this?
The EPA has, has to approve our network monitoring plan.
Okay.
They have very strict requirements for monitoring, because monitoring is where the reality is. Monitoring tells you what's actually happening, all the stuff I do in the SIP and the projections and modeling, but it's the air quality that's measured. And so, you know, that's why in this chart that shows the magnitude, you had those many, many years at the State Office Building. It was very representative monitor for carbon monoxide, because carbon monoxide was a vehicle issue. It needed to be where you had high traffic. It was perfectly for that. Well, when they continue to add requirements, they, it's very expensive to do a monitor. You run a new monitor, it's about $125,000, and that's just equipment. So they put the monitors, they co-locate monitors, and they start adding the PM 2.5. It's more cost effective to add those monitors to existing monitors, because it's cost. It's all about cost. So now we're in a position, we thought that we could try to do a split, we put the request in, whether it was weather or whatever, now that monitor is not reading attainment. The whole area is serious. We still have the request in. We don't know if it would actually be something that the community wants. Do you want to have areas treated differently? We, we know that it's not representative for PM 2.5. How would we find a representative? So, so if we split, we have to have, we have to come up with more money, or we have to try to get approval to move a monitor, which is very, very difficult, to have a representative sample on the Fairbanks side. Then it takes three years to gather a design value, and you could have a design value that's in the 50s or 60s. It's very, it's very similar to what North Pole has, maybe not as high. It's possible, given some of the things that were, the data that we have from the special purpose monitors that were in the, in some of the neighborhoods on the Fairbanks side. So there isn't a resolution right now for the split. We're looking into it, EPA's looking into it, but there's a lot of other issues that are now coming up to light based on the new rules that passed in 2015, that may not necessarily be in the best interest for the community right now, but it doesn't mean that later on, that we still might want to do a split, but the jury's still out right now. Did that answer your question?
Somewhat, but it brings up a lot more. So let me get this straight. You're basing, the EPA is basing the entire air quality system on one location?
That's typical.
For the whole non-attainment area? One single location?
But you have, you have modeling that's written, that's, it's really, I highly recommend you read the SIP and how the modeling and how it's, how it's done, but that's not atypical. You can have huge metropolitans with one monitor, and that just feeds into, it's supposed to be representative, it's supposed to be representative of your, a maximum impact site. And they did a saturation study last winter, and the North Pole monitor appears to be, and the, the report is out on the website, that it is a representative area for, there's, they found areas that were higher, they found areas that were lower. So that Fairbanks North, Fairbanks Fire Station Monitor is cited appropriately for the whole non-attainment area. If we were to split into two, it may or may not be representative of how the Fairbanks portion is, because it would be two areas. So you'd have to find something on the Fairbanks side. We really don't have the money for that.
I just find this entertaining, so I'll get out. And thank you Cindy.
And for everyone in the room, I realize that we all have different rules in our, in our councils and assemblies, and because this is a work session, our purpose for being here is to ask questions, not to debate, and that's why we've had a few bumps along the way, and I apologize for not explaining that earlier. So that takes us to Ms. Mayor Ward.
Thank you for being here this evening. I appreciate everyone taking the time out of their busy schedule to address some of these issues and get some information. You mentioned something earlier on the submission of the SIP. And I guess, does a SIP have to, is it required that the SIP model attainment with the measures put in it to be a complete SIP? We were talking about that earlier.
Well, the moderate SIP was modeled to be impracticable, okay? So whatever you get in place, whatever we have in place by the end of 2018, we can take credit for, for projecting in 2019 and forward, all right? We'll have to model, if we have a list or things we're working on that may not necessarily be completely in, in rule or completely committed to, that probably will make it so it's not approvable, but it may pass the completeness test if we're in process. You know, we have a, we have a SIP we have to get in, but we have elections coming up that will have an impact likely one way or the other on, on the development. So we can get a SIP in, but we know there's going to be a lot of work in progress. So I don't know if that completely answered your question? Yeah, go ahead.
Basically. Sorry. The SIP is supposed to, the community is supposed to take the measures that are identified in the BACOM process, and in the back process, and implement them and model them. If it doesn't get you into attainment, you're not penalized for that, because you've done what's best. You looked out all over the country, you identified what's best, you put it in, if it doesn't bring you over the goal line, there's no penalty for that. You just didn't make it.
Okay, so that goes, that answers my question then. Okay, so that goes, that answers my question then. So if the serious SIP is submitted, and it does not model attainment, you essentially don't get penalized for that. But imagine, what comes after that?
It's most stringent measures. And the difficulty now is, before we had a moderate plan, we got to see it, and they say, okay, you've reclassed, and now you have more time to put your serious in. If we don't put a request in to extend at the time that we put in the serious SIP, and include most stringent measures with that request to extend, one, we can't get an extension, and two, we're not complete. So we can't turn, we can't necessarily, we could turn in a SIP that said, it's impractical for 2019, and then by 2019, when we fail to attain, we would start the sanction clock. We have to actually have to start a new plan for 5%, which would mean, and we wouldn't have any extra time. We have to go straight into a 5% plan, which is, we'd have to adopt control measures that reduce 5% emissions every year until we reach attainment, which is probably very aggressive and more, control measures would be even worse than a most stringent measure. So a most stringent measure could be just something based on time. So it could be a measure that, so let's say you decide to do dry wood only sales, all right? It's going to take, it's going to take people maybe a couple of years to get enough of a stockpile in order to meet that requirement. So you could say, okay, we're committing to dry wood only sales, but we're not going to put it into place until, or we've started, we've done the ordinance, but the implementation date isn't until 2020. That would be considered an MSM. It's not, because you're actually not implementing it until after 2019. So you have the flexibility to pick control measures, but push out the start date, and then we could model those, and you could look at it because it would be committed, but it's, the start date's way out. You could phase ultra sulfur, same thing. So timing and phasing are also flexible ideas when dealing with trying to look at control measures. I mean, the rules and the Clean Air Act wants you to reach attainment expeditiously as possible. So, you know, the idea of saying, oh, let's just wait and see how long it takes us, it's not built that way. You had the time earlier, you know, when you first were identified, and you weren't, you may not necessarily have been aggressive enough. Now we've run out of time. They're very, they want it done because it's a health-based standard. You need to get it done. You're on the right track, but you're not going fast enough. So the incentives, unfortunately, they're negative incentives, is that you put in more control measures to get into attainment faster.
So you had mentioned earlier that the most stringent measures have to go, have to be part of the serious SIP-
Yes.
-as it's submitted.
In order to get extensions.
In order to get the extension. So, and you were talking earlier about the most stringent measures are not what you're considering for the backed-
The back-end list right now?
Right.
That's correct.
So, and do you foresee that as being an issue with EPA?
That's a completeness issue. It's, the community is, if we think that, you know, that natural gas is coming, you know, they're working, they're building the storage tank, it's kind of, that natural gas is still a viable, important element, that can be an MSM. And you want extensions so that you can put off any kind of sanctions or whatever, so that your due date is, you know, your attainment date is now 2024. So it allows you time to get natural gas in, and then you have control measures to try to get you into attainment, to bridge the gap until natural gas gets in. Ideally, that's what you'd like, but you can't get the extensions unless you put in most stringent measures at the same time with the serious SIP.
And that's the 160 million price tag, right?
No. Well, we're trying to, we're trying to push back on that, and then say that our most, we're considering most stringent measure is the 53 one.
Okay. And you haven't got a determination on-
No, that just got, they just saw it, and yet, actually, today when we were talking to you, I pointed it out. By the way, don't just look at the backed analyses and the preliminary back determinations. You need to look at the concept documents, because we're laying it out there that we think a most stringent measure for backed is the same thing as, most stringent measure for the stationary sources is the same as the backed, which is the $53 million option.
So I'm intrigued by the equivalency trade-off component of that. And I know this is something that has been talked about for a couple of years on the flexibility of the backed requirements to offset, if you will. And are you saying that there is, if the case can be made, that it is possible to use the equivalency or the trade-off?
I think if we can make a really good argument that's very defensible, that has good, solid documentation, I think we have a fighting chance. If we don't do anything, we have no chance. So I think EPA would work with us on that, but it's got to be solid. The difficulty is, is the backed requirements are written in the Clean Air Act, and we are, we are vulnerable to the lawsuits from NGOs, you know, Earth Justice, Sierra Club, all that. So we have to have a really good argument that we think could actually be defensible in court. So it's an option, and we're looking very hard. We encourage everybody to look at that. We're hoping that the point sources will come to the table and discuss that with the community, these options. But we know they don't have any extra money. The state doesn't have any money, so ultimately, the cost is going to be to the public, you know, ratepayers if they do that. So the reality is, there isn't any money. It's how much, which cost is going to be acceptable, and which, you know, that's the decision. That's going to have to happen. But the difficulty is, is that we have vulnerabilities, and it could very well be the courts, because that's what's happened in other communities. Phoenix had a FIP, a federal implementation plan, and their most stringent measures were determined by the courts.
Even though, I mean, and I guess I'd be curious on, and maybe a little bit of a rabbit trail here, but in that, in that case, did the efficiency of the measures have anything to do with it, or was it strictly just the interpretation of law that they had to be done?
I didn't go into that depth on what happened in Arizona and Phoenix. But that's all I'm just saying is, we're just trying to be open, and, I mean, we don't have all the answers, but we're trying to get, we're trying to do as much as we can to be supportive.
So, just one more. When we talk about the cost associated with the direct PM 2.5 reduction for the point sources, you know, those price tags are pretty steep. And some of those agencies, whether it be, to use the base as an example, you know, they may not be able to use, their color of money may be different and not be able to be used in a different sense. So how do you envision those point sources coming together to have that conversation on equivalencies and trade-offs to the backed?
We don't know. I mean, each one will have to look at themselves, what they can and cannot live with, and hopefully they'll come, and maybe they have options.
Is that something that DEC envisioned, that you envisioned DEC being kind of the spearhead to get everyone around the table, or is that something that you would rely on the local-
Right now, we have an MOU that the local air quality control program would take the lead, but we would like to be part of the stakeholder group.
Thank you.
Mr. Pollan.
Thank you. I'd actually like to give a couple of rounds of thanks to the public. Thank you for coming tonight and participating in this. This is, it's good to see the public being involved in this. It's very important. I would like to also thank Nick Zarnecki for actually presenting what I think has the possibility of being a reasonable pathway forward, helping find solutions for what is obviously a very difficult problem. So good work on this. Couple of specific questions. We had the graph up there a little bit ago, or the chart up there, was showing 67% of the sulfur dioxide emissions were from oil-based space heating. What percentage is from the point sources? The part we're trying to spend 54 to 160 million on?
Have that number right with me. I'm sorry. I can get it for you, but I don't have it.
There's a lot of numbers.
Less than, between that and 100, but I don't know anymore.
Okay, so we're-
I think Mr. Tecky-
Well, based on Table 3 in the actual preliminary document, that 67% should be point sources, and that's why it's such a focal point. And then you get like 30 something percent per oil-based space heating.
Okay, so this is an error.
That's my estimation, based on Table 3.
What is the point sources? Is that percentage?
Well, if you look on Table 3, we're looking at SO2 not directly made at PM 2.5.
Right, and it's SO2 number?
That's an SO2 number.
Right. Yeah, so in-
So point sources have got 7.4 tons, right?
Out of a total of 11.1.
Right. Isn't that about 67%?
Yeah. So that should say point sources.
If you look at the last number there?
Oh, I'm sorry. I apologize. You're right.
Okay, that answers my question. It seemed like the magnitude of the issue we're talking about with the point sources, they should at least have the majority of the sulfate producer.
I apologize.
All right, thank you. The other question I had, sort of got partially answered with Mayor Ward's question, but we have a lot of developments that are happening, obviously, with the natural gas now. We finally have a path forward. Things are happening. The storage facility is going to be expanded substantially here. One of the things that I think is quite possible, there's a lot of pent-up demand, particularly from commercial users, most of whom are currently fuel oil users for heating, that the pent-up demand for natural gas. And so as soon as that becomes available, I think you're going to see a change in the utilization of fuel oil, and I would hope that that piece somehow gets factored into the analysis of the cost. And the other part of that is a question, I guess, to DEC, are you, where are you at in factoring in the kind of the rapidly unfolding changes in the picture with natural gas in this community in the analysis that you're doing now?
We have, one of the things that we tried very hard to do is to assess when gas is going to become available. Right now, we have to look at, can they attain by 2019? And we talked to Gene Terrio a lot about, you know, when gas is going to become available. And he gave us a copy of a document that made it crystal clear that this facility that's currently under construction will be completed in roughly mid-2019, and then there's a startup period where they're assembling, loading gas into it, and it won't be until the end of that year until it's really available for the communities that start using. And so within now, in 2019, gas doesn't play a significant role. We know that there's some older estimates of what the conversion rate is going to be in the community. Everybody's aware that even if you put the pipes in the ground, that there's a cost for connecting it to the house and then making a conversion in the house. And Ada is very active in trying to find ways to facilitate that. And people are also very interested in what the long-term price is going to be for gas relative to oil, and that isn't crystal clear at this point. And so while you say there's pent-up demand for the commercial customers, quite frankly, there's concern about what's the rate of conversion going to be for consumers? What are they really going to, what kind of incentive are they going to get? And another issue that's complicating that we haven't really talked about is that the PM levels that come out of ultra-low, burning ultra-low sulfur fuel are roughly equivalent to what you get with burning natural gas. So it's not, it's not like if you shifted to ultra-low sulfur fuel, and then you converted from there to natural gas, there'd be a big difference in the benefit.
But there could be a difference in price. And so that could be your economic incentive to move to gas, because there we go from ultra-sulfur diesel to higher price, going to the lower price of natural gas, if that price came in lower. You know, there's so many unknowns.
But we're not economists in this field, and we can't, what we can only do is use the results of what another state agency is predicting that's going to happen. That's the, and that's a defensible position to take. We can't do an independent analysis relative to what Ada's done and make an estimate of what it's likely to be. And so our approach has always been to rely on the analysis that another agency that's responsible for that area is providing.
I'm glad I don't have your job. Anyway, thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Tecky.
Oh, no, my comment was actually around the 67%.
Thank you. I have Mr. Roberts next.
Okay, a few things. First, on the point just brought up, you said it's not going to be effective for 2019, but if we get the extension for 2024, then gas could have an effect. Is that being factored into the SIP and this extension that we're looking at in the whole picture?
We will likely fold that in. We haven't gotten to that stage of the SIP yet, but we put it in the moderate SIP. I think it's a key factor. One of the things you have to remember to take credit for something, it's got to be an enforceable item. So, you know, we can put it in, guestimations, but at some point, there's going to have to be a requirement, and that's how all control measures are, so that we can take credit for it and estimate and project. So if you really want to project attainment in 2024, if we have an extension, then you have to have control measures that are federally enforceable and you've committed to.
Right. So is that another one of the unreasonable positions that EPA holds, that if we can't control it, it's not going to happen, and that everything's about control?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay.
That's a key item. It has to be enforceable. Otherwise, they call it a voluntary measure, and all your voluntary measures come together, only get, you only get 6% reductions.
Okay. So then, on the tables that talked about the backed and the three different price levels of the backed, you talked about efficiency. What exactly is that efficiency of? I can think of different things that efficiency means. In this context, what is efficiency telling me?
How efficient they are in removing that pollutant.
Okay, great. Then, going back to the point about how we've been doing and seeing the gains that we've had without even, the gains on the non-dotted line parts of the chart were done before we even had this winter of enforcement. So does the EPA take that, the slope showing how we're diminishing the PM 2.5 that's being put out into account moving forward? Can you use that into SIP to show, this is what we're getting with the measures we've had so far, we're on this slope. It's not, it's not going asymptotic at this point. It's still going at a really good slope down in those North Pole numbers. And so is that being used to show them so that we don't have to do as much of, we don't have to show as many gains from the back-end process or the MSM?
You know, they're going to look at everything, and some of it could be, oh, well, it's not enough data, you don't have enough years. If you look at the other years, you can see the ups and downs. Are we on a down, but then it's going to go back up? There's all these fluctuations. The bottom line is, because it's a health-based standard, and the rule says we have to be attained by 2019, they want you to get there as expeditiously as possible. So they want more controls in there. Even though you're showing the downward projections, they'll look at that overall, but it's still not good enough, because you're not below the standard. You're still at the area of unhealthy for sensitive levels of sensitive population. And that's where it comes down to, is it's health-based.
So, well, let's talk about that point you made, though. You said by 2019, and we're not getting this until the 2018, and by the time you even implement anything, you're past the winter season. You've got, if you get it in by December, and they immediately prove it, which won't happen, then, and we have to get ordinances up, we're not going to have anything for that, this next winter, come out of the SIP. So nothing is, that we're going to do, that we're talking about here tonight, moving forward, is going to help the 2019 number. That's going to be affected by what we already have done and what we are doing. So how can we be using that as a basis for saying that that's what they're going to be looking at? Is that another point of unreasonableness that we are having to wrestle with? I'm using the word that was brought forth by staff. I thought that was appropriate.
Thank you.
All we can do is put an extension request and get a new attainment date. I mean, we took a lot of, EPA took longer than they were supposed to to reclassify us, you know, the, everything seems to take a little bit longer, whether it's EPA driving it, it's your standards, or just time. It just takes time to look at measures and evaluate measures and put in ordinances and see how they're doing it. I mean, it's, we don't have control over every little thing.
Right. But if they're looking at 2019, how are you possibly writing a SIP that's going to show even a fantasy attainment in 2019, when it's completely impossible?
Well, that's what we said in these documents, that we're looking at, putting an extension, and that's why we've started talking about MSMs, the need for MSMs.
So a lot of these things that they're not looking at, we can change the context by looking at the 2024 or maybe a later date, and organizing our target for that and the regulations for that. So all the things that brought up saying, well, we've got to do it sooner, we really do have more time, because we can't possibly do it in that center time.
If we meet all, if we meet all requirements, we don't go backwards. What do you think?
The rules are written that you're supposed to, for example, in the back-end analysis, you're supposed to figure out how, what's the soonest that measure can be implemented? Not how much time you have to implement the measure, how soon can it be implemented? It's all about, and the environmental community is clearly going to look at it that way. If you come up with a schedule that's obviously delaying it until the maximum point in time, there's going to be a lawsuit about that. You have to put the measures in as quickly as they're feasible. That's the whole idea behind this.
Right. But then, as quickly as feasible still gives us quite a few years, because-
Well, you have two, you have two different things. You have attainment, and then you have back-end. Remember, you said back-end is separate analysis that's outside the SIP. It's incorporated as part of the SIP, but it's still requirements that are kind of standalone that you have to do.
Okay. So then, last of all, so what we're looking at here, you know, somebody brought up law, but really, a lot of this is not the law that our elected officials passed, it's regulations brought forward by an agency.
It started, it starts with the Clean Air Act. A lot of the stuff which is passed by our elected officials.
I understand all regulations start with some little core law, but then the agencies added on a lot of these details. That's why they can be flexible, because they added on the details.
Backed and back-end are in the Clean Air Act.
Okay. So the question is, with that, and with the stated unreasonableness of some of these issues, which I think the point is especially good, that some of their penalties apply to point sources that aren't really affecting us, affecting what the problem is, is the state, and I don't mean your agency in talking with EPA trying to get more flexibility, have you gone to the state and the higher levels of the administration to try and get some pushback against the EPA and to work with our delegation to try and get some flexibility into the system, and maybe some, some things that are more reasonable, so that the money isn't wasted doing things that aren't solving the problem?
I would say that at the commissioner level, for example, our commissioner has had several conversations with EPA, Region 10, relatively new regional administrator, Chris Lattick. So those conversations are happening. I mean, EPA is feeling, they understand that, as I had mentioned, especially with the backed, they saw those price tags. They understand how many people live in this community who would have to absorb those, those rate increases. So they, they're feeling some pressure.
Okay, I have Mr. Quist next.
Thank you. I just want to make sure I understand kind of the timeline with the serious SIP and the extension. So maybe instead of asking a question, I'll just try to briefly explain my understanding, and y'all can tell me where I'm wrong. So by the end of this year, we need to submit the serious SIP. If the serious SIP can't model attainment by 2019, then it's not considered complete, unless at the same time, we also file for an extension and include most stringent measures. Is that a fair comparison?
That's correct.
Thank you.
Thank you. So, Mr. Meeks, I didn't know if your hand was up or not, but you're next.
So September 2019, 5.2 million gas is complete. We start filling it. It's unlikely anyone is going to convert in September, October time period, even if we could snap your fingers and fill it. So conversions will start happening in 2020. You wait to 2020 to raise the price of sulfur fuel oil by 43 cents for low sulfur. That will drive more people to gas versus oil, because at that time in 2020, I'm betting we're looking around 325 to 375 for fuel oil, based on the 43 cent increase. That changes the model of how many people are going to convert. The people that are going to convert are going to be converting in Phase 1, right where the monitor is. Will the EPA then come back and direct that monitor to be moved, because it will not be representative of the area, because we cleaned up, we had a significant change in Phase 1?
Well, all I can say is that in Eagle River, we had a PM 10 problem with unpaved roads, and they went and paved all around that monitor, and we didn't have to change the monitor.
So we can target all gas right around the monitor, and ensure everybody around that monitor has gas, and change the outcome of the whole monitoring program, and EPA will be good with that?
Well, we still have some, a few other hopes to jump through, and that is what's called the unmonitored area analysis, which we have to show, in order to show attainment, actually, you have to show, not only at the monitor, but you have to look at all the whole area. So it might take the pressure off for, you know, a 5% plan, and, but we wouldn't be able to submit a plan, a new plan that said, okay, we're now a maintenance area, like we did with the carbon monoxide plan, and move everything into like a status. We would still have to work to clean up all the other areas. So you have a mosaic pattern that appears from the saturation study, so you have like little mini hotspots all over. So you could get the monitor, and you could get some of the pressure off, but we would still need to work on cleaning up all the area. And the modeling with the grid cells show pretty well, you know, those areas. And then you have the sniffer vehicle that would be doing checks, and the PDRs that are doing checks. So you'd still have to do work on the other areas, but it would be helpful to get the monitors into attainment.
Thank you.
I have Mr. Wajewski, then Mr. Lawrence, Mr. Severns, Mayor Castle, and Mayor Ward. Mr. Wajewski.
Sure. I've got another, just kind of chemical question. I know ultra-low sulfur diesel produces very little SO2, but how's that compared to natural gas? Which one's even cleaner in from that respect?
I think you're approaching a point where it's a wash.
Okay, we're splitting hairs here.
Yep.
Okay. And then the other one is how, well, I guess, two other ones, but first, with that chart, with the diminishing PM 2.5 that we have, particularly in North Pole, I just have to say, like, when you're talking about one of the enforcement mechanisms is a 5% plan, and they're already reducing by, I don't know, 10, 15% per year based off that chart, it seems kind of silly.
Well, like I said, it's, if we fail to attain by the, whatever date we end up putting an extension to, that's the, before we told you, if you don't, if you fail to meet at a moderate by the deadline, then you go to serious. If you failed to meet as a serious non-attainment, or whatever that thing is, then the next stage is 5% plans. That's just the progress.
Which we're already doing. But anyways, for North Pole, let's think optimistically here. We're some years down the road, maybe one year. I don't think we'll be that optimistic. But we've got PM 2.5 measurable at all of our best sensors below 35. How do these rules get, how do they go away? What's the process for that?
You're still having your maintenance area plan for your carbon monoxide area, and you've been in attainment since 96.
So they stay with us?
Yes, they do.
10-year periods.
Yeah. Once you go, so once you reach attainment, then you put in a plan, called a maintenance area plan, which you identify, you know, what control measures you need to maintain, and that, at that point in time, if you can show that you don't need a program, you can, you can get rid of a program, or what they call sunset a program, which is what the IM program is, they move to contingency measures. Then you have a 10-year plan, and then after that, you do another 10-year plan. So it's 20 years. And you're, in essence, we have to, you know, keep, that's what you have to do, you have to keep monitoring, and you have to show that you're maintaining the standard. And if you fail, you have a bad year, then you have to implement your contingency measures.
I've got a follow-up question. I got the sense that you're trying to encourage, this is the sense I got, that you're trying to encourage the Borough Assembly to preemptively put similar rules or equivalent rules to what's coming in on this next SIP, so that basically the state doesn't have to enforce it. And so that we can choose, right? You know, if there's more local control there. If we go that route, and we come into attainment, can we, what are you going to say when we repeal our ordinance, when we think that it's no longer necessary to stay within attainment? Is that the same answer basically you gave before, or different?
You can only start repealing stuff once you've shown that you no longer need it, and then you can maintain it without it, but then it doesn't really go away. It becomes a contingency measure, which means you turn it back on if you go back into non-attainment.
So we could repeal a rule, and then you would say, okay, we're going to watch you, and then if we go up in pollution, you say you've got to put it back on, basically?
It actually doesn't ever go away. It stays in. I mean, it's called backside, and it's like you can't, the stuff that's already been approved by EPA, those can't be taken out unless you come up with more measures and you prove it with analysis. It's, you can't go backwards. And you can only take it out if you've already made attainment, and you show you don't need it, and then it just gets re-class, it gets renamed, you sunset it. The IM program for carbon monoxide is on the books. It's still there. If you have a carbon monoxide problem, that program will be in place in less than six months. Everything is there, ready to go. That's what a contingency measure is.
Well, I guess I'll share another thought then. So here's what I'm kind of envisioning. We get a lot of people convert to natural gas, and now we want to say, hey, woodburners, do whatever you want, because there's such high participation in natural gas. So I'm trying to work out how this works, so we can basically say, okay, no more wood burning rules, or do we have to ask permission before we say that?
You have to ask permission. You'd have to put a new plan showing that it's not needed, put it as a contingency measure, and get their approval. And once that happens, then you could, then they become a contingency measure, and you sunset them.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Lawrence.
Are the backed requirements for stationary sources, is that part of the Clean Air Act, or is that part of the regulations adopted to implement the Clean Air Act?
It's mentioned in the Clean Air Act.
All right, thanks.
Mr. Severns.
I was wondering if there was a simple explanation for why low sulfur fuel costs 3 cents more in New England and 42 cents more in Alaska. Is there-
You know that joke?
I never analyzed that specifically.
We need a mic.
Doesn't work.
Oh, here.
We can look at that in particular, but it's probably market conditions. There's potentially more refineries in competition back east than there is out here. So that would probably help explain it, plus transportation distance.
That's a big point, transportation too.
So, but just to provide some insights, if you were to go onto the EIA website, you can actually track prices, and they have ultra-low sulfur there. And at the New York Harbor, it's a 4 cent difference between a number one and ULS right now. right now.
Okay. Not very satisfying, but okay, that's, I know, I know, I know. Table 7 on page 10, the 53 million is capital costs. Do you have any estimate on ongoing costs?
I don't remember what that, what that is.
It's the, the 53 million.
Right, right. I know what you're talking about. I don't know the number off the top of my head, no.
Don't.
But it exists.
And the 30 million for GVEA, the capital cost, any idea what we're talking about?
Storage tank, I believe. It's a, it's a storage tank?
Storage tank.
Isn't that what it is? Anybody here?
Is it a storage tank?
Yeah, construction, infrastructure.
Yeah. Infrastructure, construction.
And so that would be lessened if we went to low sulfur, new sulfur across the area?
I mean, that's one of the, that's one of the pushbacks that EPA is saying is that, you know, here's, here's a cost for BACT at these individual, by their analysis, by the numbers that they gave us, looking at individually. There could be, you know, cost differential by just the amount and it very well could be smaller if it was the whole area and them. They may not have a, a storage problem at that point and maybe, you know, convert to what they're, what they are using. So, these numbers are based on the very narrow look that's, meaning the BACT requirements, the BACT analysis requirements.
Okay. And then, I guess one more question, and I may have missed something earlier, but why did EPA choose to continue to look at sulfur dioxide and not the other preliminary or?
That wasn't EPA. So the requirements say you have to look at direct PM 2.5 and the precursor gases.
Right.
So, as holistic, all of them, they gave the option to do a precursor determination and in the rules, they give all these guidance. We follow the guidance, we work with EPA, we ran the models. We were able with, with our determination to be able to take out those, all the precursors except sulfur. So, that's DEC's efforts to try to reduce the amount of control measures that we had to use, what we're trying to control, direct PM 2.5 and sulfur. The other ones, we're, we're saying we're knocking those out. We're going to, we're trying to do that.
Thank you.
Mayor Castle.
Yes. And so, first, thanks to DEC for your willingness to come and be part of this preliminary meeting. I know it's not required, it's out of the ordinary and it just gives us more time to get creative and respond, and I very much appreciate the extra time to be able to put together a stakeholders group as quickly as possible. We're kind of, that's a, it's a little creative also and no specific rules on how to go about doing that, but I also appreciate your pushback on getting the list, the long list whittled down to 14, control measures. If we get the stakeholders group together and we look at the list of 14 and hypothetically the stakeholders group says, gee, three-quarters of this is just not feasible in our minds and we presented that, what is likely to happen?
Is it me?
I was going to say, it might be a combination of both of us. I mean, it's, DEC, we want to work with the local community. We have a strong partnership that we've, we've enjoyed. When that, that stakeholder group, if they come up and they say that a certain number of, of measures are just, they're not feasible, we're going to work with you, but we need to also, there's this balance between, we need to provide a strong justification for why they're not feasible, so there has to be some, some specificity there. But we want to, we certainly, as we've shown with even our preliminary BACT decisions, we've shown that we're willing to push back against EPA, but we know that we also have to have some justification, you know, we have to become armed with a good justification for, for doing so.
Okay. You mentioned a couple of times, if we end up not satisfying EPA, the sanction clock starts, could you explain a sanction clock and how that works?
Okay. So, there's a couple of things that will start one, so I already gave those. So sanction clock, it is after EPA makes a formal finding, so it doesn't start until EPA publishes in the Federal Register that they, a finding, incompleteness, unapprovable, failure to submit, all these kind of things. That clock starts 18 months later, the first, if, if nothing, if there's been no remedies in 18 months, EPA gets to choose between one of the two types of sanctions. One is the two-to-one offset, so no new industry, no new source of pollution unless you remove two, two-to-one, two old pollution. So, you can't put anything new in, so if the base wanted to put in a new power plant or items, or somebody wanted, wanted to put a new turbine in, they couldn't do it if we were under a two-to-one offset sanction without removing two, two tons for every ton, to make it simple. After that, so they can choose that or they can choose federal highway dollars. So, federal highway dollars would be to the area. So it's the AMAT, I mean, FMAT's allocation, which is about $8 million per year, plus any DOT stip money, state transportation program money that they would spend on your national highway system. So they have your major highways that are owned by the state, they wouldn't be able to spend any money on those highways under sanctions. So you could still use a little bit of federal highway dollars for safety projects or exempt projects, but no new phases, no, no new projects until you, that's per year, all right? Then, six months later, so that's the first 18 months, they get to choose one of those two, and then six months later, 24 months, if you still haven't rectified why the finding happened, the other sanction would happen. So, in 24 months, you, you would have both, two-to-one offsets and highway function, highway fund sanctions.
And you would also have a FIP.
Right. Then, it also starts the FIP clock, which is a federal implementation plan. So they have two years?
Yeah. It's one to two years.
Yeah, they have to, they have to turn in a, a plan that would then implement the control measures that they, they'd have to meet the same rules. So, you're, you get sanctions and then you have a FIP, federal implementation plan, which takes, pretty much would take everything that we've done and then they would add their control measures to it. And they would add their control measures based on the, on the control, on their, what's in their toolbox, which is typically on businesses. So it's easier for them to implement items on businesses.
Thank you. Any other, Mr. Meeks?
On the federal highway funds, does that take, affect that fiscal year or if you've already programmed matching funds several years out?
So who, once it goes into effect, it becomes FHWA is the actual one that's effective, okay? FHWA is the one who deals with it and it's, it's immediate. So if you, if they've already given you money, so you've already, you know, EPA, FHWA does it in phases, you know, so you, you want to do preliminary engineering, so they, you say, may I have money for my preliminary engineering, here's all my stuff? They go, you look it over, they go, yep, you can have money on your preliminary engineering. So, from what I understand is, if they've given you the money already, you've obligated it, you get to spend it, but everything else is cut off from that point. So, you can't do any new phases or anymore, you know, your tips would have to be, you couldn't do a tip anymore. You'd have to pull all that money out for any future planning. So I think that's how it goes, but it's not EPA that does the actual stops the federal highway dollars, it's the federal highway administration. So you don't get to worry and coordinate and try to get EPA flexibility. FHWA is very strict and it's done.
And is that for the area only, or the non-attainment area only or statewide?
So we believe it's just the area. We've asked that question. I think it's just the area. I don't know at what point if a, if a state is really recalcitrant if they ever go statewide, but we know that we've been given the, the response is definitely area.
Ms. Fuck.
So we're talking a lot about EPA and their priorities. I guess under the current administration, what is, what is the sense that addressing for EPA's addressing clean air and non-attainment areas?
Well, they just came out with a, a press release that their priorities are the Clean Air Act and getting non-attainment areas into attainment. So, I mean, that was what the administrative Pruitt's office released. I don't know all the other ones, but those are the two main ones that I remember.
I would add to that, when Dan Brown was here for the second town hall meeting, he spoke to that, to that point, because we all know that there's a very different federal administration now and lots of people are asking the questions of what their priorities are. They feel that, very strongly about sort of getting a back-to-basics agenda. So for their interpretation, that, that translates into, for example, pulling back from things like clean power plan or climate pieces, they feel that they don't have clear authority from Congress via the Clean Air Act, but they feel that they have very clear authorization from Congress via the Clean Air Act about getting areas into attainment. And I believe that in that, that there was a nice visual that Dan brought from EPA with a pyramid, and I think at the top of that pyramid was air quality and getting areas back, that are non-attainment areas back into compliance or attainment with standards.
Any other questions? Yes, Mr. Quist.
Thank you. So, since there doesn't seem to be any way that when filing the serious SIP, you could model attainment by 2019 and therefore you'll be requesting an extension, I guess two things, presumably, excuse me, presumably that extension needs to be as brief as necessary. And secondly, I mean, have you, do you have any thinking on how many years you might be requesting?
We've been asking that question and it's, it's probably not going to be super brief because for every year we want to request an extension, we have to model to show that we actually need the extra year. So, it's going to be a lot of work and we can't just say, oh, we want the maximum, we want to, as much time as we want. We have to prove that we need it. So, there'll have to be that analysis and that justification.
Thank you.
I had a few questions, since everyone is questioned out at the moment. I just want to clarify, 2019, when you say 2019, are you talking January 1, 2019 or December 31, 2019 as the target?
December. December, yeah. That's 10 years after our original designation, which is, we were, we designated in the end of 2009, so it ran out to the end of the month because it was a December 2009, so 10 years, December 2019.
Thank you. And a question possibly for Dr. Little. Have we evaluated whether or not there's sufficient ultra-low sulfur diesel availability for, to serve the community, both the power plants and heating needs?
Never got to that component of the analysis yet.
Thank you. And I was curious about a few other things. The UAF power plant that's listed in, as needing these remedies, is that the new power plant or the old power plant or combined?
That's a really good question and I don't remember off the top of my head.
Okay. Seems important. I also wondered about operational costs for the GVEA power plant. So I see that you've talked about capital costs and we know that there's at least 43